Okay, welcome folks to the May 19, 2020, Zoomed and Cable TV Cohasset Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We're being broadcast on cable TV, so you can enjoy it there as well. You can join the Zoom link that was posted up on the, I think, Facebook as well as on the agenda. So you're more than welcome to watch it there. We're also on Facebook, Internet, on several sites, Cohasset Streaming, Cohasset 143, other places. So there's lots of places for you to view and join us tonight. So welcome, everybody. I'd like to call, roll call order, Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Kevin McCarthy here, aye. Carrie?
Carrie Thompson here.
And Craig, Jack Creighton.
Jack Creighton here.
Great, welcome, everybody. And as we always do, welcome everyone to wish to join us in a pledge of allegiance. To do so, you can look at the flag right there on my screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is that we have the weekly update, public emergency status update. Once again, we're most glad and pleased to have with us Chief Robert Sylvia and Chief William Quigley, the Emergency Management Director Glenn Pratt, and our Health Agent Pam Fahy will be giving us this week's emergency update. Welcome, folks. Chief Sylvia, the microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to let Chris kick this off for us if Chris wants to bring you up to speed on where we are. And then Pam, and then back to me, Glenn and Chief Quigley.
Okay, thank you, Chief. So we're going to tonight take a different approach and the beginning of a very positive approach because we've now received Phase One reopening guidance from the state. So tonight, we're going to be talking about how that covers local businesses, local recreation, and where we're going. We have some, again, this is positive news. It's also going to be a little detailed, but we're going to try to trim it down quick. We'll do a PowerPoint and ask and answer some questions. And because of the guidance, we're going to put in front of the board a proposal to consider reopening some of our on using this to state guidance. So we'll get to that after the update. So Chief Sylvia, all yours.
Okay, all right, back up and running. So Chris, if you could bring up that PowerPoint that we sent to you at this point, possibly? And we'll let Pam kick it off.
Okay, thanks, Chief. So as Chris mentioned, we are now in the Phase One of the four-phase reopening of the state. So as of yesterday, May 18th, essential businesses still all remain open. There's only one caveat, and that is that all businesses open. And everybody else that's going to be reopening, they all have to self-certify. But it's actually a pretty simple process. It's just a two-page form that the state has provided. You can get it off the state website and starting tomorrow, also post on our Cohasset website. It's a two-page form. You basically just fill out your business information, and it's a checklist. And you just check that you've done certain things like provide education for your employees, post signage for social distancing, you've provided hand washing facilities or regular sanitation for high-profile touchpoints. So it's pretty simple. Every business is supposed to have that at the ready. And you don't technically have to send it to me, but I would appreciate it if you did. That would just acknowledge, be an acknowledgement to me that you've received whatever guidelines you need for your business. For example, next week when salons opened up, there was salon-specific guidance. So, you know, we have to make sure everybody reads that and follows that. And this self-certification just kind of shows that you have read it and you do understand everything and you're ready to go. So in addition to the essential businesses that are already open, manufacturing opens up. That's really not too applicable to Cohasset. Construction, we've already been allowing construction, and we've had everybody fill out health and safety plans. And those health and safety plans essentially have been what those self-certification checklists have been. So the construction workers have provided us with information saying that they've been providing hand washing facilities for their workers and, you know, wearing masks and educating their employees each morning. Retail businesses that have currently been closed, they were considered non-essential. They can now do curbside pickup only. So they are allowed to sell. It's just that they're still not supposed to have people inside their brick-and-mortar facilities, but they are allowed to sell online, have people come by and pick up things on curbside. And places of worship will now be open beginning this weekend. The only caveat is that they have to remain at 40% of their capacity inside. And firearms retailers and shooting ranges are now open. This is based on a federal lawsuit, and the firearm stores won their lawsuit. And so now Massachusetts also has to comply with this as well. So starting next week, next Monday, laboratories and life science facilities can open. That means CSCR is going to be opening up, and they're going to start doing their testing of the different water bodies around Cohasset and surrounding towns. Offices can open up. The only caveat with that is that it can only be 25% capacity. So it's actually by individual office buildings. So for the town hall, it's not 25% capacity of town hall. It's 25% capacity of the town clerk office. It's a assessors' office building. So it is kind of, it's going to be small, basically, is what it is. Car washes can open up. The restriction is exterior only, so that just means they don't want any employees getting inside someone's car. Everybody has to stay, excuse me, inside their car. No employees go inside of it. Again, hair salons or barber shops open up on Monday. That's appointment only, just to kind of keep it under control. They don't want too many people in the store at once, so it's appointments only. Pet grooming, pretty much the same thing, appointment only, and that one's curbside drop-off and pickup. And then there's also going to be certain outdoor recreational activities and facilities. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Sylvia to get into the more details about the outdoor recreational activities.
Chris, if you could go to the next slide, please? Okay, so these are the, this is the guidance that we received from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So these are the folks that created their own outdoor recreation advisory task force. And it was, the guidance is, it covers everything from the harbor to outdoor recreation to a bunch of things. But we just wanted to focus on a couple of things because we thought that these were things that we're going to be able to open up. So if you could hit the slide, please, Chris? So the first one is passive recreation allowed, park rec and rate and recreation. So this again is we're still allowed to use wheelwright, lompa tuck, and Whitney Woods. The one piece that I wanted to mention here is it still requires face coverings. So that bottom piece where it says Executive Order Number 31, all that means is that's the governor's order that says if you cannot stay socially distanced from someone, you need to wear a face covering. And that's even outdoors. So what we ask is that you just bring one with you. And if you're out for a walk, or you're out for a run, or you're in the woods, or whatever, if you, if this, for some reason, you cannot stay socially distanced, that you please wear your mask. So that's really not a lot of changes in that regard, other than just please that one reminder. So, Chris, if you would? So here's the big one. The fields that have been closed, they can be reopened. And this is fields and tennis courts, as you can see. So, but they're open for no-contact sports. So tennis is okay. Going and playing catch is okay. Bleachers have to be closed, dugouts have to be closed. And it's being stressed right now in Phase One that only, this is only users from the same household. So as you can see by the next bullet point, athletic contests and competitions, no pickup games, organized games or tournaments. So this is a very soft opening on the fields. And it, you know, hopefully, and as we go to Phase Two, this ramps up quickly. But this is Phase One guidance, as we're reminding people. Obviously sanitizing and cleaning, we talk about this constantly, about hand hygiene and making sure that you wipe down your equipment and you don't share things. And again, the same thing as the outdoor recreation in the woods. Masks must be worn when social distancing cannot be maintained. So those are the big points. And what we will be asking is this comes into effect as of next Monday. So this will be something Chris will talk to the board about or to you, the members of the board, when we finish with this presentation. So that's what I have for the moment. On to Glenn at this point, Chris.
Well, an update on how we're getting a few other things opened and ready to go. We've spent a lot of time over the last few days working with the great folks at Sandy Beach Association, trying to come up with a opening plan for this weekend, especially for them, which is a little early. They usually don't open until the 13th. But, so we've been able to work out, we're going to leave the beach parking lot open until 6:00 PM each night next weekend and through Memorial Day. So that'll be a big plus for everyone. And then next week, we're going to spend much more time with them to go through the operational details of how the beach will be open permanently for the summer, what are the changes that they'll be implementing on their own to solve some of their issues and to deal with overcrowding of the parking lot. They'll work closely with PM and the Board of Health about their bathhouse. So good progress there, and we'll see how it goes this weekend. And another big event that seems to be pretty well-ready to go is the virtual Memorial Day celebration. The parade, of course, is off, and the large gathering at Veterans Park at the end is off. However, the ceremony and the speeches and the firing squad and all the, all the things that we're used to at the end, that's all been filmed. It's ready to go on 143 TV. It's being edited now, and it'll start showing on a schedule sometime mid-morning on Memorial Day. So that's a positive sign. The healing fields erupt, the flags look terrific, of course, as always. Phil Mahoney and the volunteers he has have put an American flag on every veteran's grave and all the cemeteries. So even though we're not going to have our big on-the-street celebration and memorial, it's going to be terrific, and that's well underway. So those are just the two positive things that I've been working on the last few days. So I think the chief is back.
Sounds good, Chief Sylvia.
So I think at this point, we'll pass it off to Chief Quigley. I think he's got a, he's got a piece that he wants to talk about here.
Good evening, members of the board. Thanks for having us again. You know, you should know, we've been, we've been working hard. We've been at this, you know, every day since our last meeting. And, you know, we finally got the guidance from the governor on Monday, and we were completely underwhelmed by it. That said, it's, we're trying to work through this. A lot of these openings are very nuanced. You know, the beach, you know, the beach is run by a private trust, a private public trust. Parking lot is run by the town. So we're trying to work through those things. And it's the same type of situation with the pools, or the town pool. So a lot of this stuff is very nuanced. It's, it's hands-on, and we're working with a lot of, you know, really great volunteers and, you know, civic-minded people to try to, you know, open, open things up as safely, first of all, safely and as quickly as possible. We know, you know, people are just, they're sick of being cooped up, but, you know, they really appreciate, you know, everybody's cooperation and their understanding. And, you know, again, please know, this is, this is on the top of our list, but we have to do it safely. And again, it's been a cooperative effort. There's been a lot of collaboration and cooperation. And, you know, this really, a lot of thought has been put into this. It's not going to be perfect. It's, it's just, it's not. There's too many moving parts, but we're trying. And with that, I think Chris is going to take it and maybe talk about some possible recommendations for the board to consider. So thank you, Bill, and Bob, and Glenn, and Pam, and everyone who's been working so hard on this. It is, it is a positive move. And at the same time, we all have to recognize that it's going to be slow. And the point of that is slow and well-fought out so that we don't lose all the gains that have been made. I was talking to Selectman Schuber earlier, and, you know, things in the hospitals are looking better. And we want to make sure that's taste that way. We want to make sure that people stay healthy and that we're prepared. As said, we also understand how frustrated people are and how much they want to get outside and resume as much of life as they can. So with the state's guidance that we just, the chief Sylvia laid out, we think it's actually reasonable for the board to consider reopening the fields and courts pursuant to the state guideline. What we're doing now is preparing posters and all that will go up on all these locations so people understand what the rules are, what's supposed to do and what they can't. So we'd recommend that the board consider doing that effective March, May, sorry, May 26th, next Tuesday. So if the board wants to consider that tonight, that'd be great. I have a draft motion I can flash on the screen. And if you all want to talk about it with us, that would be great, too. So Kevin, I'll turn this back to you.
I think the only nuance on that, I don't know, it's not a big deal, but any of the chiefs, PM, want to weigh in on it, our board, is, is Chris could read a motion that essentially we do some openings pursuant to the governor's direction and orders, which can't be done until Sunday. It wouldn't be effective just Sunday. Or we could, if we need, if the board wants to or needs to take more time for any reason, make this decision next Tuesday, which would mean we could decide on Tuesday to go ahead and, you know, whatever direction we want to get in terms of openings and so forth. Doesn't really matter to me. I'm just throwing that out. It seems to me we want to go ahead and proceed with some kind of openings, whether to do it tonight and make it effective Sunday night, or do it on Tuesday, make it effective immediately after dialogue, doesn't really matter. Any thoughts from anybody on that? Diane Kennedy, let me just get you in a second, Diane.
I'm on, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Diane.
Um, I just want to be clear on the, on the dates. I mean, I'm in favor of obviously, you know, opening the fields pursuant to the state guidelines. My question is, Sunday is the 24th. So I just want to make sure we have the date right in the motion because is it Tuesday? Is it Sunday? Is it Monday or is it Tuesday? And then if the beaches are opening this, I mean, the beach is a private entity. So, you know, I don't know if that would be coupled into this motion, or we're just specifically talking courts and fields?
If, if, can I answer, Kevin? Good? So the recommendation from us would be Tuesday, the 26th, which is, the governor's order is effective Monday, but that's Memorial Day. We don't have any staff, really, at this point, to be able to go around and start, you know, making sure everything's good. And we want to make sure we have those signs up in place. So we'd like it to be effective Tuesday. That'll give us time to get those signs up in place on the fields and get them open. And in terms of the beach, right, it is private, and the beach has not been closed. I think that's one of the things we've worked, we've worked very hard with the Sandy Beach Association is to keep that sandy beach open this entire time, at least, you know, up until 1:00 every day, when a lot of the places shut the beaches entirely. And we want to thank everybody who cooperated on that. And this is Memorial Day weekend. Obviously, people want to get outside and do things. People have to understand, as I think Glenn pointed out, this is the, what is pretty cold anyway. I don't know if people want to go in it right now. That said, people probably should be very careful because there will be no lifeguards until mid-June when the beach traditionally officially opens. So, yeah, so this wouldn't cover that. The Selectmen's court and fields, which includes tennis courts and includes Milken Field and and the Little League fields.
Okay, any other commentary?
Is it possible to get it open for Memorial Day, just for that day? I mean, is it, can we potentially get it for just one day? It doesn't really matter, everyone's at home anyway, but.
The, you know, the challenge, you know, I, I would rather have us wait one more day and do it right than try to rush for Monday and not have the signs ready and not have, you know, staff ready. Because, you know, we're just kind of pulling this together, and I would hope that people would be patient just on one day. So, you know, that'll allow us to get the signage up. You know, we, we have to go back and read and see how this would apply to make sure the tennis courts are safe and that we actually have the signage up so people understand what the requirements are when you go on the field so that, you know, we're not going to have somebody there all the time. And we'd like people to just, you know, be reasonable about this. So, but again, I think we want to have some time to get the signs posted and educate folks as to what this means. That's the reason we're looking for Tuesday.
Okay, you know, one of the things, I know the, the beaches are open for transient activity, transfer activity. But the current stay-at-home order says no parking. So the town has actually opened up the parking lot ahead of the governor's restrictions, just to remind people of that.
Yeah, we've, again, we've really, we've tried to make local conditions, you know, as people have been, you know, people need to get out, and really, the beach is a hard place to walk to if you're coming from another part of the town. But you can walk there, by the way. We encourage people to walk and bike there, if that's a healthy thing. So the parking lot will be open more hours. At the same time, as we mentioned last week, we're enforcing the sticker rule. So a lot of people, we have, we sold over 3,000, so it's clearly capable, you know, you can't just walk in and buy while to walk out. That's not possible right now. If anyone has any questions or problems, you can contact our office. And that's happened. We got a bunch more requests this week, which is great. We're going to continue to work to help expedite that process.
I see, Jack Creighton, you know, Jack Creighton, I recognize him, go ahead.
Okay, actually Diane raised her hand first. So why doesn't she go, and then I'll speak?
Thanks, Jack. I was just going to ask about enforcement. You can have the floor.
Oh, no. No, I just say, you know, Chris, if at all possible, you can get those signs up before the weekend. It's a very special holiday, and I know there's many other things going on. But if you, if you, if it is possible, I think the townspeople would greatly appreciate it. If it's easily done, if possible.
Appreciate that. The earliest we can open would be Monday pursuant to the governor's orders. So we try, I mean, again, I don't, I didn't want to give people false expectations. We're scrambling to try to pull this together. Monday is a holiday.
I know you are.
But I appreciate that, Jack. We'll do everything we can.
The people in this town have been so good and so patient. They are the, really, the heroes of this whole, and of course, Dr. Schuber and the chief and all of you. But anyway, thank you, Chris. Well, I think you.
Okay, Diane, Diane Kennedy?
I'm actually, I'm good. I don't have any, any more to add. Thank you.
Okay. I would say one thing on the signs, though, just, it just strikes my mind that putting the signs up too early, you wouldn't want to create a situation for both the police and the enforcement and everything that, once the signs are up, people think that it's immediately okay to go to all the places. So I'm sure you're thinking of that, Chris. You know, I imagine there's going to be a timing on it because once people see the signs, they may head to the beaches and the courts, and Chief Quigley would be right behind them, quite tiredly so, I'm sure. And I throw that thought out.
Yeah, the challenges here, we just want to do it in an orderly way. Because once we're up, we want to stay open, right? The goal is for this all to stay open, and we're optimistic we can do that. We also want to make sure we have the signs ready. So we're going to try to print them in-house, if at all possible, with the big printer we have, and go from there. Because, you know, we're expecting additional guidance in the weeks to come, so the regulations may update. So, so we, so that's a, that's a good point as well.
Okay, so if we've discussed this thoroughly, and maybe if you want to propose, we don't have the motion in front of us, Chris, you could, you could read the motion and then someone, oh, there it is right there. We have the motion in front of us.
Carry it.
If someone would like to go ahead and read it, Diane?
Moved that the town of Cohasset's fields and courts will be reopened pursuant to the guidance released from the state of Massachusetts effective May 26, 2020. Second.
This is a second. Okay, motions been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a roll call on that. Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schuber?
Paul Schuber, aye.
Carrie Thompson?
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton? Could you turn your phone? Jack, Jack Creighton?
Yes, Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. The motion passes unanimously, Tracy. Thank you. Anything else on this, Chris?
Oh, thank you all. We will be, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be talking a little bit in the 10 minutes left in about some next steps we'll talk about this week. So thank you all very much.
Very good. Okay, Paul Schuber?
Yes, a couple of reopenings that I was looking through. One is that, from the healthcare point of view, one of the things which is the first line on the reopening of the healthcare system is high priority preventive services, including pediatric care and immunizations and screening for high-risk patients. So one of the things the Department of Public Health is concerned about is the immunization status of young children because of the delay in the typical MMR, polio, tetanus vaccines, is to encourage anyone who is in the series with their children going through the MMR, going through the tetanus, going through the meningococcus, any of those vaccines, is to get them back on the schedule because the last thing we want is, God forbid, no one gets vaccinated for measles, and six months from now, we get a measles outbreak in town. And it could be from an imported case from overseas because the overseas vaccination profile is going to be a lot worse. So that, I just wanted to mention. The other item that's out there is the CDC did come out today. They had a webinar and a urgent posting for a pediatric multi-system inflammatory syndrome. So this is something that we'll see about a month after the peak of the COVID peak. It seems to be an inflammatory syndrome that looks like Kawasaki's disease. It may look like hand, foot, mouth disease with kids. They can get very sick. Young kids will, anywhere from the age of, you name it, one to about 20, will get very high fevers, have an inflammatory problem, and cardiac involvement, which can be fatal. And we're going to see, typically, this will be about a month later, just to let, you know, parents in town know if their kids have a high fever that stays, they really have to be seen because we've seen several cases at South Shore. As a colleague down in DC, they've seen several cases down in Washington Hospital Center. And just to keep that in mind. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any questions on, Paul covered really actually quite a bit. Anybody have any questions on that material? Okay, Chris?
Thank you very much.
Once again, to end this, but if I may, I just want to thank Chief Quigley, Chief Sylvia, Pam Fahy, Glenn Pratt, who's been running the emergency management now for such a long time. And all the work you and the town, really, that the town employees are doing have made this so that, knock on wood, so far, you know, this has not been a horrible, bad experience by any means in Cohasset. And a lot of this has to do with the citizens that have really been complying and with you folks and your staffs that have been working so hard. And we really appreciate it. We do realize we're in a marathon here, so we're thankful to have you, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, from all of us. And again, we thank the people of the town of Cohasset that have taken this to heart and are socially distancing, are wearing their masks, and are doing all the right things so that we can continue to move forward. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, I'll move now to the next agenda item, which is the Cohasset Star Commission. They were going to come back to us. We've already been to us before on this regarding the placement of a plaque at Sydney Square and the update. And I believe we have Jackie Dormancer here to make that presentation. And with that introduction, I will turn the microphone over to Jackie. Welcome, Jackie. Great to see you tonight.
Well, thank you for having me on. Uh, first of all, I, I want to let you know that instead of a boulder and a bronze plaque, we've decided to, um, commemorate the Fisherman's Well with a granite round that will be flush to the ground. We feel it would be in the sort of more reflective of, of the shape of the well. And, um, and we will have an engraver engrave the, um, the, the text on it. And I can show you, uh, what we plan. Uh, I think you had asked me to, uh, provide a rendering. It's just very rough rendering, but I think I can do it. I'm going to just share a screen and then I'll put the, uh, whoops, okay. Well, host, uh, if they, if you can give me the, uh, a shared screen, that would be good.
You've been assigned that.
Thank you. Okay. This, this is a very rough rendering of, of Sydney Square. This is Elm Street. The Cohasset Harbor Inn is here and Border Street is here. So it's roughly in the center. I just put this little white dot there. So it's roughly in the center.
Jackie, could you share it? Yeah. You've been giving sharing authorities. Could you try to go ahead and share that again? You know, get your shared content, you know?
Well, okay. It is on the screen. I.
No, it's not on our screen. Yeah. You need to click that little green box at the bottom, uh, Jackie, and then click on what you want to show us.
Okay.
I will say this is technologically impressive, everybody.
Yes.
We're doing quite well.
This, this is a screen here. I, okay. Can you see it now in a larger form? Okay.
Yes.
Great. Okay. It's, it's very rough. But anyway, you, you have an idea where it is. This, uh, this is not the granite round we're going to use, but it's, it shows you the idea. This is a granite round. And we would like to have one row, one, uh, tier of cobblestones around it just to finish it off. It would look better. So this is just to give you an idea of what the, uh, the, the round will look like in the ground. Now I've got, let's see. This, this is, we, we have an engraver who was recommended by Plymouth Quarries. His name is Rocco Canelli. And he's going to, um, engrave the text in the granite. And this is his, uh, computer did not enable him to really show you the, the way the actual engraving will look. So I asked him to send me a, an example of something that he has done. This is what he's done for the Woburn Police. So this is an example of his work so that the text will look like this and not like, that's a strange thing. So anyway, so that's it. Um, I guess we can go back to.
Jackie, what's the, Jackie question? What is the engraving going to be again?
Okay, I'll show you. Let's see after.
I mean, the actual words.
Yeah, okay. This is, okay, Fisherman's Well. At this site stood a well used during the 19th century to fill casks with fresh water for Cohasset's fishing fleet. So that's, that's the text.
Nice, nice, nice.
So I'm going to stop sharing now if that's okay? All right.
Great. You did that great.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, it, I, it should be very nice. Um, so I would just like to have your approval and then we can go ahead and have Rocco start or get the, uh, the, the round and start engraving.
So do we need a motion then, uh, for approval of the rendition, uh, at the Fisherman's Well that we just saw? Is that what it is? Was someone cared to make that motion, please?
Kevin, I just have a couple of questions first. If I could just ask a couple of questions, just what's the dimensions, Jackie?
It's a 30 inch, it's a 30 inch diameter granite round.
And it's sort of in the middle of that island.
Well, it's sort of, yeah, a little bit toward the Elm Street side, but more or less in the middle. Right?
Okay, great. And, and Chris, just in terms of like road layout and everything, we don't anticipate that that island would ever be moved around. And if it's denoting where a well was, I imagine that's never going to change.
Yeah, there's, there's been, I mean, there's no plans now, but there's been discussions about redoing Elm Street at some point. And I think, um, that's a longer term conversation. So, uh, obviously we could work around this. If plans develop.
Okay, Carrie Thompson? Yeah, you're welcome, Diane.
Yeah, my question, I want to echo Diane's concern about that. My question was about if we see any possible Elm Street redoing plans in the future affecting this, but as long as we'll be able to work around it. I think it seems very classy and tasteful and great, Jackie. So thank you for your work on this.
Any other commentary? Okay, with that then, do we have a motion relative to approving this? Anybody want to make the motion? Anyone want to make a motion on this?
I'll make the motion. Oh, Paul, you do it.
Jack Creighton?
Oh, I want Paul to do it.
Jack Creighton, go ahead.
Paul, sure. Paul, do it.
I make a motion that we approve the placement of the Cohasset Historical Commission Place of Plaque at Sydney Square in honor of Cohasset Fishermen.
Second. As demonstrated to us tonight, okay? As demonstrated to us.
As demonstrated with the, um, outline.
Tonight, yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, do I have a roll call? Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Diane Kennedy?
Paul Schubert, aye.
Uh, Jack, Paul Schubert, uh, Carrie Thompson?
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton?
Jack Creighton, aye. Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. Yes, Kevin McCarthy, aye. Are that unanimous? Uh, Jackie, thank you very much for the work you've done on this and we look forward to seeing the results of your labors.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
If you would also pass our thanks, many thanks to the Cohasset Historical Commission, not only for this, but for their ongoing, uh, great service to the town.
I'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, good. Uh, next we're going to go to, um, uh, annual town review vote on warrant articles. So, uh, these are listed here. The, uh, first article that we'll be covering is the article, uh, related to, the Alternative Energy Commission. I see, uh, Tanya Bordell has joined us. Uh, she'll be, I think, making that presentation. So with that, uh, this present, this subject was before us a couple of weeks ago. And now it's back after further refinement as it's going through the process, uh, of a presentation to the town. So Tanya, I will turn the microphone over to you for the presentation. Uh, one moment.
Thank you.
Tanya, I'll just, uh, you're on. You're welcome. Go ahead.
All right, great. So thank you, everybody. Uh, we are presenting, we, in the Alternative Energy Committee, would like to present a potential warrant article for your consideration. Based on our last meeting at the Board of Selectmen, the, um, Alternative Energy Committee has worked with town council and the town manager to think through what an appropriate warrant article would be. We had two choices. One, to request approval by the town to lease roofs of town and buildings and land for purposes of a solar energy array. The other approach would be to expand that request for approval to be not just for a solar energy array, but for purposes of other reliability and resiliency equipment such as energy storage, batteries, fuel cells, or solar panels, et cetera. The Alternative Energy Committee last week did a one hour long presentation about microgrids and the benefit of reliability and resiliency. The Alternative Energy Committee felt that if we could ask for permission to do all of the equipment that would give the most flexibility, given the grants and the potential funding that's available and the deadlines that are happening with respect to federal credits and state programs. What you have before you, I think, is a draft that narrowed it down a little bit more to be just solar energy array equipment. We can discuss the choices on that, but given the situation, the pandemic, potential difficulties associated with a town meeting, we thought, let's be pointed. Let's be focused. We know that there's a timing issue tied to in funding and incentives associated with solar energy array. And so there are two draft warrant articles for your consideration. Should we pull those up? What would be the best way to do this?
There is one of them, the first one.
That work, does that work? Uh, tell me how you want to, is this?
That's fair. I can see that. So that's perfect. Thank you, Chris. All right.
Yeah, that's it. A little more zoning. Everybody okay on that now? Carrie, everybody?
Yep, it's good.
Okay, that's a good size, yeah. Okay.
Um, we'll have to go down a little bit, but there's two warrant articles. One focuses on the town property that the Alternative Energy Committee has identified as potential sites for solar energy that would help for reliability, resiliency and cost savings to the town. And the second ties to the schools and the school roofs. So I'll take each of them separately. The first one that we're looking at is to request approval from the town to authorize the Board of Selectmen. And that's an important point, to lease certain roofs of the town-owned buildings and other portions of the building real estate for up to 20 years. And the specific sites, um, that are identified would be the DPW Transfer Station, the Police and Fire Stations, and Willcut Commons. Those are three sites that the Alternative Energy Committee identified as potentially, viable solar sites that the town could enter into a long-term contract to buy solar from solar arrays on the site. It'd be similar to what we're doing with the old landfill, but it would use these three properties to be able to increase the solar that the town buys. So far to date, the town has saved over $150,000 in approximately two and a half years because of the old landfill. We anticipate that being able to pursue solar on these sites would also create savings. And there's a window of opportunity that could close by the end of the year if we don't pursue it. And so that's why we come before you in the midst of a pandemic, asking for permission to put this warrant on the article associated with leasing these three properties of the town, uh, to pursue a request for proposal to identify whether or not it makes sense, uh, from a dollar's point of view. And then obviously there's an environmental benefit associated with the solar arrays as well. In addition to a reliability and resiliency benefit that the Alternative Energy Committee has been tasked with pursuing. So that's the first warrant article. This language has three parts. That copies almost verbatim the warrant articles that the town has voted on and approved with respect to the landfill. And so we've incorporated that into this warrant article to try to let it mimic as closely as possible an already successful project. And it asked for that permission to potentially lease the roofs and associated building real estate or easements and other access or those three sites identified. So I guess at this point, are there any questions or would you like me to discuss the school warrant article?
I'm good to go forward.
Okay, um, the second one, we could go down a little bit. Tomorrow, we are going to meet with the school committee to discuss this. I will be the first to admit that there has not, uh, been the amount of timing with respect to socialization and education of the school committee on this. We will present this to the school committee as informational and to ask them if they would like to proceed. And that is for purposes of the three school roofs. In 2011, the town did vote to allow the town to lease the Cohasset Middle School, middle and high school roof for purposes of solar energy array. And at that time, we did put out a request for proposal recognizing that the roof was old and would have to be replaced in the life of the power purchase agreement. We obtained a bid for that which, um, would have saved us money, but there were issues at the time associated with the Cohasset Middle High School roof tied to leaking that, um, made it not prudent to proceed. We are asking for reauthorization of that approval. It was done in 2011. It's outdated for purposes of a 30B solicitation. We would need to have the town's reauthorization approval to lease this Cohasset Middle High School roofs. The roofs are older. We would put out a request for proposal if the school committee agrees to allow for a one-time removal of the solar energy array in replacement that would allow this town to replace the roofs. Um, and I think that's the best way to proceed. For purposes of Deer Hill and Joseph Osgood School, it is the, um, they're approximately all the same sizing for the roofs. Uh, again, old roofs, we would require that the developer remove the solar energy array and put it back on purposes of replacing the roof. I'll be honest with you, the roof is a moving target. It was supposed to be replaced in the next couple of years. My understanding is the state has identified some of these roofs as having not a 20-year life, but a 28-year life. And so therefore, uh, we feel a little bit more confident in moving forward and not waiting for the roofs to expire, especially because we have some federal incentives and state incentives that could expire within the next one to two years. And so we feel at the Alternative Energy Committee, in order to move forward with what we're tasked to do on the reliability, resiliency, in order to save the town money and in sort of order to, um, help the environment, uh, we would request permission to be able to lease the school roofs for purposes of the solar energy arrays, one of which is basically a reauthorization of what the town approved in 2011. So Paul is now, those are the two warrant articles we would propose. They're very focused on the solar energy arrays. Um, are there any questions?
Are there any que- Diane Kennedy, then Carrie Thompson?
I thank you very much. Um, I, I just have to, yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thanks. I just want to get, um, have some clarity on a few things, um, one of which is it, just so people don't know, this doesn't mean anything's going to happen. All this is really doing is giving the authorization, which would otherwise come from town meeting, I believe, to the Board of Selectmen, should we have an opportunity to, um, take advantage, as Tanya said, of some, some credits and we would need to effectuate, um, the leasing of these rooftops for, for a project. So it doesn't mean it's going to happen. It just means that we have the authorization to make it happen, should we get a good situation and negotiate it before, um, you know, our next town meeting would be. So it's just kind of transferring the authorization. The question I also have, so you know, I, as I made my points last week, I, I'm a little disappointed that we're talking about this on May, whatever it is, the 19th. Um, and I wish we had had a little more fulsome conversation earlier in the season, but, um, here we are and, you know, I'm willing to support it to get onto the, uh, onto the warrant. The other question I had is just on the school roof. Um, the way the warrant article is written, it says it authorizes the Cohasset School Committee to, uh, negotiate the lease. And I, I want to make sure that they're the ones that negotiate the lease and not the Board of Selectmen because I thought, um, we did all the property. And just a little caveat again to all of that, last year, the Board, of Selectmen adopted a disposition of real property, um, policy and set out some guidelines about, you know, what we would do if we were going to be negotiating a, a lease of, of town property or a sale of town property or an easement or something like that. So I, there, there is some kind of, um, a process in place by which we would. So there is some kind of process in place by which we would, you know, review and, and make decisions on these kinds of things. So it wouldn't, it's also not willy-nilly. But I do have a question about whether that second warrant article should be about the school committee. Obviously, we wouldn't likely do anything without them, but is the authorization to them? Thank you.
So I'll respond based on what I know, and then would defer to Town Council. In 2011, when both the old landfill and the Cohasset High School, Middle School roofs were brought forward to the town, the landfill was for the authorization for the Board of Selectmen to proceed, and the school roof was a combination of school committee with the advice of the Alternative Energy Committee to proceed. But I can defer to Town Council as to whether we are continuing with that, because it's consistent with what was put before the town in 2011, or if there is another arrangement related to the town-owned property is the schools.
Yes, Paul Durensis. One second. Just seeing if I can find Paul here. Paul Durensis, you're on.
Can you hear me? Is my audio on?
Yes, yes.
So the general laws give the control of school buildings and school property to the, the school committee? And there's a process by which the school committee can declare things surplus and so on and so on. And of course, you can always hire the Board of Selectmen to help them, but the best practices for these kinds of articles is to leave it where the general laws puts it, which is on the school committee.
So, so before this goes to town meeting, what is the process by which, who has to be approving this, you know, in order for this to end up on the warrant, you know? Is the school committee have to vote in favor of this? And what's the, what's the rule here in terms of that? Who's got to?
The Board of Selectmen can put any article on the warrant that they deem appropriate. There doesn't have to be any other votes. Most.
So the, so we, go ahead.
Most towns require internally, as a local matter, that any article for a, another board or committee has a formal vote of the other board or committee. That's to ensure that, in fact, if we decide, if we get a favorable response on one of these school buildings, and the school committee says, go away, leave us alone, it would have been all a waste of time. So it's good to get their buy-in to this warrant article before it goes on the warrant.
So it'd be best, good practice for us to, for this to go to the school committee, reviewed, and have them approve this before we put it on the warrant article. Have I got that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. And there the, any other questions? Do I hearing any other questions? So there's two warrant articles here, then what do we, what would we need to do here? Because we're not approving this tonight. Do you need a, Chris, do we need to vote on this, or no?
So the direction you gave last night, and Paul could jump in if I'm misstating this, was to pull something together, which you're not. So i- if these are generally comfortable, they're going to go on to school committee tomorrow. Tanya is, I think, teed up for Thursday. I know the agenda for advisory is for them to be reviewed on Thursday. And at that, they'll come back to you next week. And then at that point, you'll have the input of the school committee and the advisory committee, and then at that point, you can vote to, to put them on the warrant, and then recommend them one way or the other.
Okay, Tanya.
Yes, so Chris said tomorrow I'll be going to the school committee on Thursday, the advisory committee, and I've already talked to the capital planning committee. Sam and Brian both felt since there's no capital expenditure associated with this article, or even the potential request for a proposal that would be put out to a developer who would front the money to go to the capital planning committee. However, I do want to note and thank Brian Host, who sat in on the Alternative Energy Committee meeting last week, and so has a context behind this.
Okay. One comment, I have one thing that tracks me to this project, and projects like this, is because our resiliency in terms of our power, in terms of the losses we've had, and there's the general problems with power and electricity we've had in town, was, I believe it was the number one concern that came out of our study that we did last year with the Massachusetts Vulnerability Project. It's commonly known in town that this is a major, this is a major problem. It was our number one goal last year. And anything, the thing that can lead us to energy essentially, power independence and resiliency, is extremely important, I think, that we, that we have that. We need to stop trying to rely on giant international corporations and so forth, and grab our destiny more in our own control, because we have great control over our water, we have control over our sewer, we really need to now get control over our power. So what's very attractive to me in this, is this is a pathway to independence and resiliency for the safety of Cohasset and the future of Cohasset. So I'm very eager to listen to what the other committees have in moving forward with this or a similar type project. Carrie Thompson?
Yeah, I want to echo what Kevin is saying. I had the pleasure of attending the Alternative Energy meeting last week, and I want to thank Tanya and everyone on the committee for how they've scrambled and hustled to get this done. I think this is really timely and important that we do get this on the warrant, and I understand we need to get the opinions of the other committees this week, but I think it's fantastic, and I think it's fiscally responsible of our town to be doing, and also forward-thinking in terms of what we're going to have to do as part of our broader environmental goals, in both the short and long-term future of the town. So thank you for this, Tanya, and I think it's great, and I'm hoping we can add it to the warrant next week.
Great. Any other commentary? Did you say, Chris, we needed a motion on this, or do we, oh, wait, Paul Schubert? One second, Paul.
I just wanted to say that, yeah, redundancy of power availability is key. If we have a backup source, if we have solar, if we have battery storage, all of this on top of what national grid can provide us, just to have the redundancy of available power. The town's lost power, I don't know how many times, I don't know, 50 times since I've lived here, and I've not lived here longer than 25 years, but it's at least 50 times. It's amazing, and this will.
Paul Schubert's kind of turned off here somehow. Wait a second, Paul. I want to make sure we, for some reason, your microphone getting.
I think you turned yourself off, Paul. There you go, you're back.
Yeah, Paul, you're talking.
Did you hear me?
You could repeat the last, yeah, minute, the last minute.
Yeah, so I, I just think it's a, it's a way to keep redundancy for power availability for the town. We've lost power, I think, 50 times at least since I've lived here, and I've not only lived, I've just lived here about 25 years, so it's, it's a repetitive problem, and this would be one way to alleviate the constant intermittent six, 12, 24 hours of no power. That's it.
Jack Creighton, and then I have a question from the audience. Go ahead, Jack Creighton.
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you. I think it's also important that we, we understand with what's going on now. Our children are being educated in systems that require power. Many of the people in town are working remotely, and all, and the indications are that a significant percentage of people will continue even after the virus is over to work at home. So having a reliable, fail-safe source of power and the redundancy is very, very important. And I think the Alternative Energy Committee has done a good job in putting together a plan that will give us that redundancy and resiliency.
Thank you, Jack. I have a question from the audience, which I'll now read. I want to note this, at this meeting and in our meetings, that we require that you give your name and your address in order for your question to be read. So I'm going to reserve the right, you know, not to be asking, forwarding any questions where we don't have the name and address of the, of the questioner. And that's the way we conduct our regular meetings. This question comes from Mike and Lisa Dick, 27 Packer Avenue, and the question is, how will the initiative align with the AEC, Alternative Energy Commission, Town Power Cooperative Proposal?
Yes, thank you to the Dicks. Thank you to the Dicks for asking that question. The Alternative Energy Committee, and this is recorded, I encourage everybody interested in reliability, resiliency, to take a look at our meeting, we presented on a microgrid plan, a conceptual framework to go forward. The microgrid is a way to island off our town and ensure that we have energy even when the rest of national grid system is out. It's also an approach that would allow us to isolate problem areas in the town so that the rest of the town can receive power, even if the line is down on, for example, Forest Avenue. There are many building blocks that go into that type of redundancy and independence of power, and a key part of that building block is our own generation, the form of solar energy, for example. There are other building blocks tied to energy storage. There are other, we have to worry about, of course, going forward. It's not just about work in school, but going forward, there's going to be an increased usage of electric vehicles, and when the power goes out, it's going to be disaster for this town, because we are the demographic that already has the Priuses, has Teslas, has electric vehicles, the Leafs. And so if we don't skate towards that puck, it's going to be even more problematic when we lose power. We feel we're skating towards the puck. This is a first step. We initially, as an Alternative Energy Committee, voted to have a much broader set of proposals for the town. Even the situation we're in and the real deadlines by the end of this year that we're concerned about with respect to solar, we have scaled it back down to be solar only. Some of the other components, we could either come back to the town and ask for permission, or the town itself obtain grants, best in, for example, battery storage. So it, again, in light of the pandemic, the fact that it's forward, when it's coming forward, because of some of the state programs that are now moving forward and getting passed, we have focused solely on solar, but it is a key part of the broader plan. And I encourage anybody who's interested in understanding how the Alternative Energy Committee is thinking about reliability and resiliency and a larger mini-grid, microgrid independence, that they watch our presentation from our meeting last week.
Okay. All right, any other questions? I'm not seeing any from any source. Chris, there's, there's in, there's no motion on this, or do we?
Yeah.
No, just general, general agreement that you proceed, and, because we're not voting on this tonight. It's, it's a thing in development, so.
If this was just the first article with the town buildings, I would say you could put it on the warrant, but since it's, it's attached to the one from the schools, that's being presented tomorrow, I think it's just as easy to be, these are ready to go. Tanya will present them, and you can as easily next week put them on the warrant and vote your recommendations, and, and close the warrant next week officially, so.
I think that's, that's correct, and it's, it is important, as Tanya had pointed out, and, and Paul Durensis pointed out, that we hear, you know, from the committee that's heavily involved and affected by this, that's the school committee. So we do definitely want to hear that carefully, but it looks like we're giving you the go ahead and just proceed and, and continue with the good work, and see what we come back with. Diane, were you trying to get your hand up there? Go ahead.
I just, I actually wanted to ask about when the warrant was closing, but Chris just answered that question. And, and again, to, to focus us on the, the actual articles that, you know, were, were, I, I would love to have a fulsome presentation from Alternative Energy, so we can talk about, more about, you know, prioritizing some of the energy issues in town. These are literally just to give us or the school committee ability to lease property, should we be.
Okay, thank you very much. Diane, you done? You done? Okay. All right, with that then, Tanya, thank you very much. Excellent work on this, and look forward to seeing you next week.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. The next article we have is regarding reciprocal easements at 124 Elm Street. So the way, you know, there's been, there's been a lot, you know, with a lot of conversations going on on town about this, and, you know, these are, this is a very important article. So I want to structure the conversation so it's very productive and thorough for the board. The way we will deal with this will be is, is we really want to concentrate on listening to our professionals, and, and the first, and, and that would be that we would start off with the presentation of the reciprocal easement that is coming to us from the planning board, and that would be from Clark Brewer and Lauren Lynn. Then after we're done with that, and actually, when we're doing that, if there's any questions either during that or right after that, that's fine, only from, from the Board of Selectmen or Chris, and that's all that's here anyways. And then, secondly, we will then hear, hear from our town attorney, who's evaluated this, has an opinion to give us on this, and, and whatever, obviously, he's going to be presenting in terms of suggestions related to this. At this time, we'll talk with the, any questions with the town attorney, or with, back with Lauren Lynn and so forth, as we're gathering this, this two block faces to make this all digestible to the Board of Selectmen, so we can get it in these manageable chunks. And with those two done thoroughly discoursed, we'll then take this into deliberation from the Board of Selectmen, and, and decide what we want to do on these particular matter. So those will be the framing of how we'll conduct ourselves. And with that, I turn the presentation of the planning board over to Clark Brewer and Lauren Lynn.
Thank you, Kevin. I'd like to have Lauren make the introduction and, and framework for the discussion about this easement warrant article, and then I'll fill in the blanks or, as, as necessary, and be available for questions.
Thank you, Clark, and thank you to everyone here tonight, and for the opportunity to speak. So I'd like to address two things. First, the article intent that's before you tonight with those reciprocal easements. And then, second, I would like to just address some confusion about parallel processes regarding this site. First, the article intent. The intent behind reciprocal easements is that, I can show you a map in a moment, which will, you know, validate this more, but there's an irregular property line that exists between 124 Elm Street and 2 Border Street. For reference, those are the current site of the Cohasset Harbor Inn, which is 124 Elm Street, and 2 Border Street is the location of the Veterans Memorial Park down in the harbor. We, we are aware that there is town drainage infrastructure that exists underneath the private property at 124 Elm Street. In discussions, we've also, it's come to our attention that the development team that seeks to redevelop the Cohasset Harbor Inn site, due to the irregular property line, they would like to access a portion of what will be their parking garage and their parking facility over a piece of land that is town-owned. Something to highlight here is that when I show you the property map in a moment, you'll recognize that there exists 17 spots right now. Something that we would look to address in this article is that there would be no net loss of parking, and as I'll show you in the map on a moment, that is something that is of particular interest in addition to the town drainage infrastructure that needs to be protected, and that the parking will see between the boundary of private and public property. The reason that the planning board has proposed this to you tonight is, it's an issue of timing, and I just want to clarify that this article, similar to what Diane Kennedy said about the article you just heard with the AEC discussion, is that this would allow authorization for the Board of Selectmen to take a motion if they so choose in the future. This article, in no way, shape, or form, intends to establish easements. It allows for a town meeting to grant the authority for the Board of Selectmen to do so at the future. This would, we recognize, there's a lot more information that needs to come before any sort of specifics and dimensions of easements are negotiated, and we anticipate those will come of the planning board special permit process that will follow the redevelopment of the Cohasset Harbor Inn site, known as 124 Elm Street. So with that, I'd just like to address, again, this is just, the intent of the article looks to authorize. to authorize the ability to take action if the Board of Selectmen so choose in the future. It does not necessitate. And then now I'd just like to address confusion between parallel processes that are related to 124 Elm Street. There is a difference between the article language before us and a pending application for the site. Last week, the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals were in receipt of applications for redevelopment of 124 and 87 Elm Street. We have distributed this information to the Board of Selectmen and to the planning board, and we are actively working with town staff to figure out a way to supply this information for ease access of information in the town website. We recognize that this is an unprecedented time with restrictions to town hall and public gatherings. So we're looking proactively to address how we can make this process as transparent and easy for the public to understand as possible. So with that, I do believe that there has been a sense of confusion amongst even some of our own planning board members that, you know, there, I just want to just specify that these are two different parallel tracks, though they are related. The special permit process will open, we're planning for June 17th. There will be more public notification when we are ready for that, but that will be a process that will be lengthy. It will be deliberative and the planning board will take some time to weigh in all of this information before they return to the Board of Selectmen upon conclusion of the special permit process to discuss easements. And again, just circling back to the timing of all of this, again, similar to the article you just heard for AEC, is that in the interest of facilitating this in an orderly process, it would be a, a great asset to the town for the Board of Selectmen to be able to negotiate these upon prompt completion of a special permit process, rather than waiting to coincide with whatever special town meeting process may ensue in coming months. And again, we, we appreciate your time and your consideration. And I, I'll let Clark take it from here if there's anything else that I have may missed or could use further elaboration. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lauren. I, you know, I will say that the, the, the planning board vote on the draft warrant article, it, it was a kind of an imperfect part of the process, but I have seen the updated draft language that identifies the owner instead of a specific owner as, as the owner of record and confirming the preservation of parking spots as, as being a reasonable step. And the planning board does have a, a meeting tomorrow where we could vote on this draft language depending upon what the selectmen decide tonight on the, on the warrant article, so we can make a, a recommendation on the most current language. And the board, rather than individual members, can rescind the previous vote that we took on May 11th. But, but I will say, this is of a timely nature in that the, the easements that are just being discussed have to do with a significant infrastructure, the, leading to the outfall pipe in, in the tide gates into the harbor. And I think it is a, a useful thing to discuss being able to negotiate these easements sooner rather than later. In that, right now, the, the pipe runs under private property. And while, as a part of the planning board, we've talked generally about prescriptive easements that might be available to the town. And the, the, but the, the, the problem with that is trying to get an easement after the fact does involve a lot of legal time and with land court. And I think it would be in the town's best interest to be able to negotiate that with the authorization of town meeting through the selectmen and the, the property owner of record. That's all I have. Unless there's some questions, I'll, I'll let you pick up the, pick up the ball, Kevin.
Kevin, you're muted. Thank you very much. We actually have, in case the audience that's listening is or is not aware, is, we have the proposal that's been talked about here, and, and then Plack has referred to an alternative proposal, which may address some of the concerns that have arisen and that, that but then, you know, go, it would then go back to planning for them to consider and, and take that up. So just so that the, the board, the people know, I know, I'm sure the board has all seen that there's two proposals, is the original and there's the alternative. And it seems as though the alternative probably has some things that puts into, into writing that, some of the issues that have been raised. From a process point of view, what I'm thinking is, is that we would show the board and as well the public what the, what the existing language is. And, and then any questions or comment on that? And then go into Paul Durensis, who's going to present his opinion to, to status of the statuses and, and then give what he, he's going to propose as an alternative to address some of the concerns. So that's the way I think we'll proceed, but I see we have a question from the audience, which I believe is a developer. So I do probably want to take that, as long as he's given his address properly. He didn't, but I think I know who he is. He might note that, but I'm going to go, I see the hand of a selectman, selectwoman Diane Kennedy. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, just, just for my own set of clarifications, when you refer to two proposals, are, are we just talking two sets of, of language for the same article? So the, the proposal's not different. The article is still just to grant the selectmen the authority to negotiate these leases, but we have two sets of, two versions of that article.
Bicycle 24.
It's not material.
We'll think about what to do. Yeah, it's, there's two versions. So we'll show one, then we'll show the other when Durensis is, and then we'll decide sort of what to do. I want to be open here, so.
Do you want me to post the, the original language now, Kevin, or the, I can put that up?
What I have right here, I'm just looking at the questions. I'm just speaking to the board, okay? The, Adam Brodeski is here, who's the counsel for CHI Elm Street, the developer of 124. He's on a, a conference. He's with George McGoldrick and Ted Lubitz, who are the developers, I believe. And they would like to have an, an opportunity to speak on the proposed article. So what I was thinking of doing is, is I want to stick with what we did before, though. First, is, is deal with just our professionals now and go into some deliberation from our professionals. And then when, when we're done with that or had enough that, we will let George McGoldrick and his attorney speak with us. But I want to stick with our town professionals first. So with that said, why don't we put up what this, the original is? And, and then I will have you take it down and we're going to switch over to Paul Durensis. So here's the, this, for the board and the town, this is what originally has come to us, and I believe this has been presently approved from both the planning board as well as the advisory board. That's, they, both of these boards have approved this and sent this to us. And this is what's, has been discussed. So actually, why don't we, we're going to go into an alternative to this. But if anybody wants to ask any questions on this, I can't see whose hands may or may not be up, but speak up. Maybe if someone else can recognize it. Diane Kennedy, could you say something?
Yeah, no, my only question is, I think, you know, my understanding is that town council kind of updated and rewrote this language. So just when he makes his presentation, I just, you know, just because, because this is the language we've already read, just, just to give us the salient points of what's different, what has been changed in the motion or the, the article that Paul drafted.
Oh, for sure. He's going to actually show it. He'll, you'll see the, the actual.
Changes. Excellent.
He's written it, yeah. So, so with that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have a disclosure I need to discuss. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Attorney Brodsky is with a firm that I had used in 2019 just to work on some legal matters, professional legal matters. So I think it should be noted, just for the record, that that firm had done work for me in 2019 on professional legal matters.
Did that work have anything to do with the subject of this warrant article?
No, it did not.
Paul Durensis, I think you heard that. You, you're not recusing yourself, I presume, or are you?
No, but I just want to.
As a.
And I consulted with Attorney Durensis earlier.
Okay. So that's made, and you'll proceed as a regular member of the board then? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you for making that disclosure. Okay, with that, Paul Durensis, I'd like you to give your opinion. And I know you, I believe you have, when you have written an opinion and sent it to the board, not everybody. Well, no, but take that down if someone would please. That, we're not ready for that yet. Yeah, so Paul, I know you've had an opinion, you've written it, you've sent it to the board, but could you sort of express, talk on that for a little bit? And, because that may explain why the fact that, you know, and give the context of the alternative that you're proposing. Paul?
Sure. Thank you. Best practices for conveying property is to have the actual dimensions of the property and clarity as to what's being conveyed. This proposed article that came to the board, the original article, did not have specific locations for the easements. The reason why it's best practices is to have the location. It's for the voters. Ultimately, the property of the town belongs to the citizens of the town. And what is good for democracy is that citizens vote fully informed particularly as to property matters, as to what properties they're acquiring and becoming responsible for as taxpayers and what properties they're conveying. So the original article has arrived, does not have that. So my first recommendation was that the article should be deferred to the fall town meeting. At the fall town meeting, I suspect that the planning board processes will still be ongoing. There'll be a lot more information at that point in time. Hopefully, the planning board will have more clarity on the exact location. And therefore, the voters would be better informed, rather than doing it now, here in June. Our town meeting, while being well organized by, by Chris and the board, is still going to be done under the, the constraints of this pandemic that we're in. Things probably might be a little rushed. I hope they're going to be a little rushed so that people can minimize exposure and so on. So that having a real estate article on for a town meeting in the middle of COVID-19 isn't, isn't the best use of, of voters' time, particularly where the dimensions aren't established. On the assumption that the board may want to go forward with something, I rewrote the article. First, I used more the, the cohesive style of article. Secondly, I took out the name of a particular property owner. There is, we were told, a pending transfer of ownership with regard to the property. We don't know when this will get to the point of being executed. So rather than naming a particular party, I put in there the property owners of record. And then I added two conditions. The first condition is that we actually get a recordable plan that shows the exact locations of the easements. So while that's going to be too late for the voters on this alternative, it at least will be something that we can record and it will become public so that people can see what it is they were actually conveying or receiving. The second condition was to preserve the 17 parking spaces that are quite cherished by the town around Memorial Park so that the authority of the Board of Selectmen would be limited and not be diverted at, at the last minute to some other use or some other purpose. Those parking spaces will remain as parking spaces at the current location in this new version. So those are the highlights of the changes, but I, I want to emphasize that the primary advice is to follow best practices and do this in the fall where we know and where the voters know what they're giving up and what they're receiving. Can we put up now the language of the proposed article? So this is the proposed language. You'll see in the fourth line there, it says property owner of record of 124 Elm Street. And then later on, if you could scroll down a little bit, the article emphasizes that the current plan is only a illustration of where the easements might be. It's not the actual easements. Voters who are used to the traditional best practice way of doing things might get confused that that's where the easements are in fact going to be at the end of the planning board process. If they're somewhere else, we don't want some unhappy voter thinking that they didn't know what they voted on. So I added language in there that the exact locations are not yet determined. Then at the very bottom, there are two conditions. You can scroll down. There's the first, that the authorization to the Board of Selectmen is limited because we're taking away from the Board of Selectmen the ability to give away the 17 parking spaces. The second condition is to fill in the missing piece in the article, which is a recordable plan that actually says where the easements are. So that was the missing piece in the original article. This would get us to the point where we can actually do some conveyances. So those are the changes.
Good. Chris, could you put that so it can be all seen on one screen now? I think you pinch it down. Make it small, just, just so that everybody can see this possible proposal. That's what, that's what, that's what the possible proposal would look like. Okay. Anything further, Paul?
No, thank you.
Is there, is there any questions from the board? Can I see the participants, please? Any questions from the board at this particular point? Diane, Diane Kennedy, then Carrie Thompson.
Yeah, just, again, just some, just, I want to just clarify, because again, we're not executing anything. This just would potentially give us the authority to negotiate easements. And Paul, the two material changes that you made from the, the original article that was approved by planning board and also advisory, neither of those committees, I'm just confirming, have seen this newer language, the second language you just presented us with. And, and they will, assuming we go forward. And I just want to clarify that the two changes that you put in there was the ability to, for, or the lack of ability for. And I just want to clarify that the two changes that you put in there was the ability to, or the lack of ability for us to do away with those parking spaces and that we wouldn't be able to do the easement recordings or negotiate these until we had the actual specifics.
Yes.
Which we wouldn't be able to do anyway, I don't think. Like you can't negotiate an easement without that information, right?
Well, but that's what you're asked, you're being asked to do with the original article before you.
Okay, so that just makes that clarification. Thank you.
Yes, Carrie Thompson, then Lauren.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. I actually really like the new language on here. And can you just clarify again that this is in the best interest of the town because of protecting the parking spaces? But also, and I would like to get Clark's opinion on this, is there any reason why we shouldn't let the planning board see this new language and deliberate again tomorrow before we make a decision as a board?
Okay, Clark, I'll let you answer that. And then Lauren?
Certainly, that's a possibility. And I think that Paul Durencis, as Town Council, has added to the, the detail of the warrant draft in ways that I think makes things clearer and should help on the floor of town meeting to be able to take a, take a vote, an informed vote. So what I would expect is if, if the board of selectmen votes on this tonight or defers to your next meeting, that the planning board would take it up tomorrow night. And as I said, we would rescind the, the previous warrant language so that we would have a new vote based on this current, the current language.
Thank you, Clark. Anything else? Lauren, you've been patient. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, two items. One, I think it would be helpful for me to show you the accompanying plan that proposes the general location of where these easements would be. Before I get there, I just want to clarify a point to answer Diane's question more clearly. It was never the intent of the planning board, and I apologize if that's been misconstrued, but it was never the intent of the planning board for the board of selectmen to agree upon any sort of easements without dimensional standards. The intent, again, of this article is to seek town meeting approval to authorize the board of selectmen to take this action in the future. Fully expecting that this will be vetted, deliberated by the planning board, and upon conclusion of the special permit process, the planning board would then return to the board of selectmen with the dimensional specifics of the easements for further deliberation. So just to clarify that. And then if I could just share my screen.
Actually, can I interject?
Certainly.
It seemed to me that, you know, what Lauren just repeated, and you said it earlier, and Diane has said it, and everybody sort of said it, that I believe that these two items that are being put in are two items that there isn't, doesn't seem to be any objection to, or a lot of any objection to, and that is generally what's intended anyways. It really clarifies and, you know, it makes it clear. And that's what everybody's expectation is. That is that there wouldn't be less parking, and that obviously no easement is going to be done unless there's a plan, a specific plan that is approved to. I mean, part of the reason for that is you don't want to negotiate an easement with somebody, and then a plan doesn't go through, and they run away with the easement, to be blunt about it. So that helps, that protects the town, but both of these things being protective in a way that everybody has assumed would be in this anyways. I think what Attorney Durencis has done is just, he's qualified it, and that's what we should do to, to protect the town. So I just wanted to make that, that observation. Lauren, can we put up what Lauren wants to show?
Yes, I would just like to show you the accompanying plan. And again, this is not for specifics. This is for reference purposes, so we're acquainted with the area. Can you all see my screen now?
Yes, we can see it, Lauren.
Okay, great. So this area right here in the circle, that's the Memorial Park. And then you'll see this dark black line. That is the property boundary, again, a very irregular shape. What the colors are depicting, as you can see in the red, that would be its suggested area of an easement to the town from the developer of the private property. You can see right now that the existing superimposed parking spaces are partially straddling that line. The green area, which is a little harder to see, you can see over in the corner of the screen here. This would be a potential location to demonstrate a suggested easement to the development team so that they can access their parking garage that would come in off the street somewhere around here. And again, this blue area, again, a temporary construction easement could be proposed here to allow for access over town property during the development phase. And in this plan here, it's existing 17 spaces, proposed 17, there's no net loss. And in fact, it's actually adding a handicap accessible aisle, which I don't believe that we have currently existing here. So just, I wanted to provide you with this as the reference plan. Again, there are not, there are no specifics for dimensions here, what the easements would be. This plan is intended to provide an example of the location that we would be requesting reciprocal easements upon completion of the planning board process.
Are there any questions? Let me see the participants, please, or if I can. Okay, any questions? Okay, Paul Schubert.
Paul, where is the outflow for James Brook? Is that underneath that easement?
Yes, let's see. You can see up here, the, it's a dotted line, and forgive me for the AutoCAD text that keeps popping up. There are dark shaded lines under here that run. These are relative to the drainage system that connects to the manhole. And that, this is again beyond the private property boundary here, so you can see how it runs under the property, under the private property here. Again, up here, another location of drainage that is town-owned that we need to be able to access.
Just to augment what Lauren said, the James Brook piping is to the south or down on the, on the sketch. You can see that there's a, in the middle of the red area, there's a structure for changing direction and then running out to the head wall in the harbor side. Now, the piping to the north that runs outside of what's shown as easements, some of that is going to be abandoned. And an easement won't be required for those to protect them in the future.
Okay. I'm going to look at the participants. Is there any other questions? I can't see anybody. I just see the map. Anybody else? Any commentary? Jack, Jack Creighton, one second. Let me undo your thing here. Jack Creighton?
Yeah, um, you know, I thought much, as I was watching this, those of us who've been, and I've spent two years embedded in this, looking at all this, but I think for a lot of the people who are watching are very concerned. There's some stuff that, that we know in the board of selectmen and planning that they may not, they may not be aware of. Some of the issues that we've been, that have come up, and they've just come up in the past couple of days is, of course, we just found out today that two of the planning board members have emailed an intent to rescind their vote because they're not sure that the information that they had when they voted was complete. We don't know the answer to that, but we do know that there are two of the members of the planning board that just this aft, late this afternoon have said that they wish to rescind their votes based upon not being given, you know, proper information. And so that just came up. I don't know how we, we deal with that. I do think that Attorney Durencis did a very good job kind of cleaning up the language, so it's, it's clear. Some of the other issues in there is we're not quite sure of who owns what. There's a whole variety of legal debt collections going on and.
A point of order. This is irrelevant to the discussion of this particular article.
Excuse me, I'm going to let Creighton finish it. But confine, I think maybe, Jack, you might want to be more specific that you're concerned about the entity that was named, and since that entity was named, you can, you keep, why don't you name the entity and just express your concern briefly?
Well, I guess we're not, yeah, I, I agree. The point is, is not to, is to do nothing other than indicate that we're not quite sure what the conveying entity will be. And so when you have language authorizing us to do that, asking the town, we just want to find out what that conveying entity is, is, is going to be. And there is some uncertainty, and we have rooms of that. And that goes to the authority of the town to negotiate with that. So I mean, this is just, I think the people in the town should know of that information. I'm not making an evaluation, but as I was watching this, it seemed that there were things that were being discussed that would not be necessarily clear. And I'm just bringing them so the town people, townspeople can be aware of that. That's all.
Okay. Any other commentary from anybody on the board? What I'd like to do is that we do have the developer and his attorney here. So what I had discussed prior was is that we would just listen to the professionals, then deliberate. But, you know, in terms of getting all information and being, you know, totally open here, I have no problem if nobody else does to let the developer and his attorney present to us that which they wish, at which point we'll then pull it back for, for us to deliberate with the board. If I generally see a nod in the head, that's the way I'll go. Okay, so we'll, we'll now listen to George McGoldrick, and I believe his attorney. Chris, if you're there, could you provide them with access to talk to us?
Yep.
Okay, George, you there?
Here he comes. Want him to be videoed as well?
Sure, if you want to.
Let me promote him up to panelists, and we can send them. I just brought his attorney, this George, and Adam. If there's anyone else, they can, they can, they can ask. Okay, they should be up and ready there, Kevin.
Okay, I'm just, I'm make sure, make sure everybody moot themselves, so I don't have, well, I'll just boot everybody. Mooting everybody, okay. And wait till the George comes up.
I'm here.
George, you there? I can't.
I am, thank you.
Okay, can everybody hear George? Just Nord, but I know that. Okay, George, we've, and I think you've been online, you've heard the professional presentations that we've had to get, you know, the board fully informed. Now, at this time, because you are here and do want to speak, we would like to allow you to discuss this with the board as you wish. So go ahead. George, you have the microphone.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So George McGoldrick, 107 Border Street. Just wanted to talk about the changes that were being proposed for tonight. We don't have any issue with those changes. There's always the intention of keeping the parking spaces and in fact, improving them by adding a handicap availability space with it as well. In terms of the easements, the actual easements, what you saw from Lauren is pretty much where they're going to go, but obviously, they will be fine tuned as we go through the planning board process. So those two changes are fine. I just want to ensure that this still goes forward on the June warrant because that's really what the timeframe that both the planning board and advisory board have, have realized needs to happen. And I think that many of the selectmen have heard from a lot of the townsfolk today and yesterday about the timing of all this, that it is important. It's just a piece of the puzzle. It's a large project. It's very important for the town. And we're going to do everything right and correct. So for example, when you guys saw the, this article back in February, you asked that to go back to the planning board and have the planning board put forward, and then have the advisory board review it and vote, and both of those things happened. So the process that you guys asked for this fast winter has happened. Town council's made some changes, and we're fine with those changes. We just hope that the board realizes the extent of which everyone has been working on this and looks favorably upon putting this article out and let the voters decide in the June meeting, so.
Thank you very much, George. Does anybody have any questions of George? Okay, all right, then that's going to, more or less, a lot of the information that we've had, we're probably ready to really seriously deliberate and decide what we want to do. So does anybody want to make any discussion relative to that? I'll recognize Diane, then Carrie.
Yeah, I, you know, I would like to make a motion that we put this article, which we've been discussing since February, on the town meeting warrant for it to, to allow for the board of selectmen to negotiate reciprocal easements at that time when we have the information to do so. Or, and we, if we never get that information, we don't do it. But I, I really want to get this on the warrant. I would defer a recommendation on the article to town meeting until we've had advisory opinions from the advisory board and the planning board based on the language that council has drafted. So I'm making that motion.
So what motion are you making? Is, there's two articles before us. Are you making?
I'm, I'm making a motion that we put the article that, that was drafted by Town Council because he drafts our motions for, for warrants. And, you know, and he cleaned it up and I think added some, some value to it. And that's the, I'd like to move that we put that on the warrant.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a second to that motion. In terms of deliberation, we have.
This is, so this is the, the tuned up final copy that our council reviewed.
Correct, and that would be the motion, that would be the, the article, you know, and of course, there is, there's motion language that will be, I guess, drafted before town meeting. But that would be the, the article that would then go back to advisory and planning for their recommendations, which we would then take and, and vote on a recommendation to town meeting on the article. I mean, I just think it should go before the voters and.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, Diane. So what your motion is, is, is your motion isn't that we put this on the article tonight. Your motion, I, I think this has to go to planning anyways, but.
My, my motion is.
Be clear, yeah, your motion is, is that we take Article 24 and we refer it back to planning, noting that we're favorably disposed to it. Is that correct? I, I just want to be, be correct, be correct. It has to go to planning, then advisory, and then back to us next week.
My mo, my motion is to put the article as drafted by Paul Durencis on the warrant and then to go to the committees, because I feel like we're just, there's just new language. There's nothing major that has changed, and we're just sending it back to them to review the article as written for a recommendation to town meeting.
So we've actually put this one on the warrant. My question on that, Durencis and to Clark, would be, is that, is that the, is that the format we can follow? Is that? Well, first of all, a motion's been made, so according to Roberts Rules of Order, we've had a second, yeah, we have had a second. So now we have deliberation on the motion. And according to Roberts Rules of Order, deliberation on the motion begins with the person who moved, which was Diane. So you can speak first if you have any further to say, Diane, and then it's going to go to Carrie. Do you have anything further?
No, I, I don't have very much more, other than I think I've said it. I think we've been discussing the right way to do this particular article for three months, and my motion is made. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Carrie Thompson?
Yes, and I want to thank, first of all, everyone involved in this. Lauren, you're doing a fantastic job. George, I'm really impressed with all of this and for Paul Durencis for the new article. I believe that this should go to planning board first again, and I would actually feel comfortable probably voting on this next week, but I'm not comfortable putting it on the warrant yet until we hear from planning board again based on the dissent I feel is happening in planning board. And I would like to, for them to be able to review it again with the new language and with the new information that's come to light. But I think that I would prefer to let this go back to planning board and then have this some, be something we address next week at our meeting.
That partly went to what I was trying to get to for a question was, is, is that the legal process that Carrie just described, the one that we have to do? I, I'm, I'm, in other words, at one point, I understood that this article could only come from planning. And if that was the case, then what Carrie is saying has to be done. But if it's not the case, then we can vote on, legally vote on what Diane, or deliberate further on what Diane is talking about. Can someone, Durencis, I think you'd be the person to answer that. Paul, wait, let me just. Let me just go to find you here. There you are. Sorry, Paul. Could somebody undo Paul there? Let me just. There you go, Paul. Paul Durencis. So what's the process we have to follow? What's the law here?
Under the general laws, Chapter 39, Section 10, you can put this article on the warrant.
But we can do what Diana's proposing if we want to. Or we could, yeah, it's up to the board. Okay. So Diane said that, Carrie said that, Jack Creighton, and then Paul Schubert. Jack?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah. Yeah, I'm not opposed to this project, by the way. I'm really a big supporter. I've spent two years working to get this harbor, so I'm not opposed to it. I am concerned that at the last minute, we have two members of the planning board that we look to have rescinded their approval, and I don't know why. We just got, and the members of the Board of Selectmen got notices like five o'clock today that they, there's a lot of information that they were not privy to and that, and that I think they some have seen it, but I'm not sure. But when they say that they want to rescind, before we move forward, because if they rescind, then the planning board no longer has a majority recommending this, and it had been unanimous, I would be a lot more comfortable and I think the process would be better served by going back, seeing if there's nothing there, I hope there's nothing, and then bring it back and remove whatever cloud there may be. There may not be a cloud, but if there is, I think George is better served removing that cloud rather than, you know, rushing forward to approve something, knowing that there's a cloud out there. And then also making Durensis, Attorney Durensis' language approved by them. So everything is done by the book because I think it's a great project. I like what's been done. Indicated that I think that it's a much better project than it was a year ago. And I think we want to move forward, but when you move forward with a good project, it's always good to move forward with it properly.
So I'm going to call on Paul, then Lauren. That's the way to get it. But just, I want to check on that, that that is, I think, a concern we need to think about is that we have had two planning board members out of the five have sent us letters today, you know, essentially saying they were displeased with the process. They want to be, have a shot at doing it again. I think that if we were to go through with this, they may feel as though we have more or less jammed this, you know, on it without their, without their full deliberation and then that's what they're asking for. And what you might create is two pretty upset, at least two, unless there's more, but two pretty upset planning members. And they're the ones that have to do all the work with Clark over the next six months. So I'm not so sure as we want to, you know, disregard what they're saying to us. If they're saying they want it back, we send this, we could send this back to them and then have them propose us what would be better because I, it does seem to me, I'm worried about dissing and irritating two members. They're going to be key players in this going forward, but that's just my thought. Paul Schubert and Diane Kennedy, then there's a question and answer that I'll get to. There's a public question I'll ask, but Paul for-
So what's before us is placing it on the warrant. So the clearer language has been delineated and clarified with the assumption and the plan that the clear line of where the, where that dispersment of that portion of property is going to be, will be done. This is not a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen. This is only putting it on the warrant. It can go back to the board of, to the planning board, have them discuss it. If there is further information that is, you know, not to their liking and they vote against it, we have the ability to not recommend it or just remove it from the warrant. So this is just placing it on the warrant. And I'm willing to place it on the warrant with the language that's been clarified and codified much better than what was originally issued.
Thank you, Paul. Diane Kennedy, then Lauren?
I just, I feel completely blindsided by the rescinding discussion because I'm, you know, I haven't, I didn't completely check all my emails. So I really don't know what is being discussed here about planning board members and vote rescissions. I apologize, I was working up until where I logged into this meeting and I don't even know if it's an appropriate conversation for us to have when we're talking about a town meeting article. So-
So just to help with that, two board members in, one of them in a longer letter and one of them in a shorter one dated today. And so their public records essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, any board member, I could read it if you want, but they're essentially want to rescind their votes. They seem to be, they feel as though the process, they need to reconsider this as a board. They don't, they're not pleased with the process that went through. I could list a number of things, but it might get more, I don't want to get too inflammatory or to get us going down that discussion too much. But the bottom line is we have two, you do have two planning board members who say, we want this to come back to us for reconsideration and therefore, you know, we want to rescind our vote and redo this. So that's what, that's what's going on, Diane. And Lauren?
Yes, I would just like to provide some more information as to the discussion about the request for rescission there. This is what I attempted to address earlier when I gave my opening statement about the separation between article intent and confusion on the process. There is a reference from one of the planning board members that there was 490 pages of new information submitted. That new information is the application that we received for the zoning and planning boards to begin the public hearing processes in June. When I disseminated this to the planning board last week, in no way, shape or form was I anticipating that the planning board would be taking the application into consideration on this article as we already know that this is going to be a long and deliberative process that will come after the planning board has time to wade through the whole application and get to the specifics of the process. So I just want to clarify that I think that there is some level of misunderstanding between two parallel, yet related processes here in this article that is requesting that the board places on the town meeting warrant to be able to have the ability, but again, not the necessity to address in the future. And then again, with the parallel track that will be running, which is the special permit and site plan approval application process before the planning board that will begin in June. So just to provide some information as to what that information was, there was no intentional withholding of any information. It just so happened that this is all coinciding in one week in this, you know, short timeline that we're trying to get everything together for a town meeting.
Thank you, Lauren. I'm going to go to Clark next. Jack, you've already been called in. I'm lowering your hand, I assume. Clark, Laura?
Yep, thank you. Just to add to what Lauren said and talk about the issue, you know, I will say that these Zoom conferences work, but they're quite a bit different than an actual in-place meeting. And there's a certain level of alienation and confusion that can happen as a part of individual planning board members and working together to come to a consensus and decision. With that said, I think that the planning board made the best decision that it could on May 11th, based on the information that we had. I don't believe it's possible for individual members to rescind their individual votes, but it will be possible for a board to rescind its decision of May 11th, the May 11th draft of the warrant article and take a vote on the new warrant article. So I think that's, that's possible. And like, like the Board of Selectmen, you're making the best decisions that you can based on the information that you have right now. If new information came out yesterday that caused planning board members to be concerned or whenever it came out, it was still after the vote that was taken. And, and I think the selectmen deferring to their next meeting to take a final vote on recommendation for what they recommend to the floor of town meeting is, is again, using the, the meeting process to get the best information that you have and make a decision and then live with that decision. And I don't know if Paul Durensis has any comment about whether a Board of Selectmen member could rescind a decision, a vote, or a planning board member is, I don't, I took a quick look at some of the Roberts rules and my understanding is a board can rescind its decision, but individual members, I don't believe can.
Paul, Paul Durensis?
Well, that's correct.
So probably from a legal point of view, they've made their expression, it's just not legally enforceable if I'm correct. Let me, Clark, let me go to you on that because I am concerned about these two board members. I'm sure you've got to be too because again, you live with them and are going to have to live with them throughout this whole project. So in going back to them, what are you more comfortable doing? Are you more comfortable if you went back with them with the proposal that's on hand that the Board of Selectmen have voted that this is, this is on, this is what is to be on the warrant article? And now you give us your view on it? Or that we not do that, but send you back to the board there with, you know, no vote, but with the inclination that, and hope, you know, from us, our inclination that, you know, you at least start off or work on Article 24. How's the best way to go back to your board, do you think, with all these current developments?
Well, I think either would be fine and it would work out fine. I think the most conservative approach would be for the selectmen to recommend that this go back to the planning board and advisory and then, and then take a vote and at the same time, a vote to put it on the, on the warrant article. That, that leaves you with the most discretion and the ability to make the best decision at, at the time when it needs to be made.
So in other words, that we would put this on the warrant is what you're suggesting. If we put this on the warrant, can the planning board look at this and change it, Paul? Or would they be essentially to vote on what we've put before them? Paul Durensis?
I'm sorry, just a clarification, Chairman. I, I think it either would be, either option would be fine, but I think the conservative approach and what I was suggesting would be to, for the selectmen to defer to planning board to, and then advisory. So the planning board can fully deliberate the, the issues that other, that all the planning board members might have relative to any new information that's been brought up as well as, as well as the attempt to rescind votes.
Okay, so in other words, just to send it back to you folks to do as you wish and then obviously, if that was to occur, we would expect you to be taking this up, but not mandated by putting it on the warrant right now. That's what you're saying. That's the more conservative approach. What I'm concerned about is that gives you, but it also, I really think we need to think about, I've been on boards, we all have, for them to have written these two letters today strikes me as unusual. And I'm trying to help Clark out and the board as well. He could walk back into a hornet's nest if he walked back to, you know, because they're definitely expressing some kind of displeasure. So I think in light of that, our deference to them as board members and common sense would be, why don't you go ahead and review this whole thing? By the way, we think this is pretty good and, and, you know, just let the process evolve as it will. We have time to do that, for that board to do that and deliberate and get back to us next week on it. So I can see that. Jack Creighton, is your hand is up? No, if you don't, that's all right. And I just put your hand down. No, wait a second.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Okay, yeah, I think Clark is, you know, I would like to be able to vote to move this forward, but I want to have a vote and I couldn't do it knowing what just came up this afternoon. But I want to clear the air and I think as we move forward in town meeting to get this thing passed on the floor, it's a lot better if we have a unanimous vote of the Board of Selectmen to support this. And I think we need to listen to the planning board. So the process, Clark has a good way to make this process go smoothly and do it the way it should be done. And then I look forward, I hope that there's nothing there that would cause me, and I like so far, a lot of what I see there. And I think it's time we move it forward, but let's do it properly.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other selection? Because we have questions. I'm trying to think, and Diane, is your motion, you want me to entertain these questions before we vote on that motion? I'll defer to you on that, or we can go straight to the motion. There are questions from the audience here.
Well, you know, of course, I would like to, you know, hear any questions from the audience. Again, my, my concern is there is a motion in a second on the floor and, and the only kind of way to extricate would be for me to withdraw my motion. I'm extremely uncomfortable because we're talking about, I mean, all of this is what's in the best interest of, of the voters, of the town meeting members. What kind of information, what level of information do we need to give them to make informed decisions? And I'm, you know, I'm a veteran selectman that have been coming to meetings for nine years and, and, and I get here tonight thinking we're going to take action on something that we've been discussing since February to learn that apparently at the some last minute, there was, you know, some other board rescinding. But like, I just, imagine if you're sitting at home right now and you're watching this and I don't, I don't know what's going on as a selectman. I don't know what those communications were at five or six o'clock tonight. And, and there's probably people sitting at home wondering what the heck we're talking about. So, and I don't even know if it's appropriate to be talking about it in a meeting when we haven't posted on specific votes over on, you know, relating to, again, whatever it is relating to. So I'm really, really uncomfortable with that information being here and me not understanding anything that is being discussed, to be honest with you.
I was trying to solve, half avoided in a way because, one way to solve that, one way to solve that would be, one way to solve that would be, is I could read these emails, but I'm kind of trying to capsulize those because I think reading the emails would give you the information that you want. But it also speaks to the other thing. It isn't, I think it's beyond just these two people from the planning board coming forward. There's, there's just a sense here, a lot of information apparently has come out in the last two or three days that people want to digest that and there is time to digest it. We can, you know, they can do that and then we can bring this back next week. And I think that's what you're hearing. As far as the email, you could either look-
I would like to know what information is being, we need to digest. I don't need the specifics. I totally appreciate what you're saying, Kevin, because it probably isn't appropriate for us to read something that came in an hour and a half before a meeting that is trying to derail something. That, it's just-
Well, I got to say, you know, you say derail. I'm trying to be respectful of these planning board numbers because they're, they are raising their hands and saying, and I find, I do find that unusual. I just, I think we need to be careful there because you've got to realize you've got human beings sitting on a very, very important board that have got, that are going to do all the work on this. For whatever reason, they've made this expression in light of, but it is what it is. Who else was trying to raise their hand? Chris Senior?
Yeah, I just, I'm not taking a position on any of this. I don't have a vote. I think the process has been laid out by Clark pretty clearly. You know, you have an article. I think all of you seem to be okay with the contents. It goes to planning, let them deliberate, let them have this meeting, let them have their conversation, then it goes to advisory, then it comes back to you next week. Seems to make the most sense, whatever process you take. I just, you know, you're running in circles right now and I, and I think that you need to just move, if you're, if you're all seemingly good with the, with the language, send it to planning. Whether it goes on the warrant or not doesn't matter because you're going to get it back next week either way. And I get it, so.
No, I think you're trying to be helpful and we'll go Carrie then Diane.
I want to echo what Chris just said and what Clark just said. I know that there's a lot of heated emotions here and I think the most conservative, safest thing to do is to let planning discuss this again, see what advisory thinks and come back and continue this discussion next week when we have all of the information that we're unsure about right now.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Paul Schubert, you had something?
Yeah, I'm looking at one of these emails. It came in at 6:58 PM. So it's just, I'm getting really annoyed if this came in that late from someone from the planning board. We've had months to look at this. The vote has been taken. My second is still there. Now, I'm not sure whether Diane is going to withdraw her motion, but I'm fine. It goes back to planning, but this, when you do a vote, you do the best vote you can at the time. Information comes up. You ask for, you know, for a reconsideration of the vote from the entire group that's there and from the entire committee. This- This, I, I don't want to get annoyed, but it's, it's a little bit annoying. That's all.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm, there's five questions up there, but I'm not gonna, I'm going to try to move this along. I'm not going to answer these. I'm not going to go to the questions. I don't really know what the board wants to do here, whether you want me to go through these questions or not.
Well, we have, we have a first and we have a second and we have deliberations of the group. And then we have a vote and we don't necessarily need to have the questions. If you'd like to, I'll defer to the chairman.
Trying to be open. No, I'll, I, I think that makes sense, Paul. Diane, do you want us to go through with the motion? Do you want us to go through a vote on this?
Listen, I, I want to keep the peace and, and I want to, you know, process is, is the most important thing to me. I feel like the process has gone relatively smoothly with some fits and starts on this particular matter. I came here tonight thinking that, you know, I, I was very comfortable. I, I think that the issue, oh, it's the same issue we discussed with Tanya, whether town meeting should give us the authority to negotiate something in the future, depending on what options were available. But I also understand, and I, I completely feel blindsided and I'm sure many people sitting at home feel blindsided with this, oh, what just happened and what came up. So, you know, I, I'm not going to belabor it. I'm going to withdraw my motion with extreme regret. I think the new language, I, I'm very comfortable with it. We got that earlier today. I was able to read it. You know, if it goes back to the planning board, I anticipate, you know, making a motion to put this on the warrant and recommend it next week.
Okay, the motion's been withdrawn. To, to move this along, the gist I'm getting here is, is, I guess, Chris Senior really has summarized it the best, you know, this will essentially, Clark will take everything that he's heard tonight and including and in this motion that's revised, bring it back to planning board and provide us with a new motion based on what you've learned tonight. And also, I think, I don't know if we need to take a nod on it, but we, we definitely want what's in this second proposed thing. But it'll be whatever else and that'll give the planning board a full feel at it. And we can leave it at that then. We're just not going to vote on it if that's okay? If that's proper procedure, is that proper procedure, Paul Durensis? We're just not going to address this and let it go back, okay? Okay, then that's what we'll do. I'm going to leave this, there's several good questions here, but I think that from our deliberation, we don't need to proceed with those. So I want to, you know, I don't, we don't want to belabor it and I don't think the board wants to entertain further questions on this. I mean, we've covered this to our folks that I see handball. So with that, Paul Schubert has his hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I would just ask that the board of selectmen refer the language that Council Durensis wrote out back to the planning board.
Second, I say, yeah, third.
Okay, so the language, modified language of articles thing has been, is being referred back to the planning board. Second, any further discussion? Do a roll call vote. Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert?
Aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kevin, Carrion Thompson?
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. That's unanimous. Clark, you've got that sentiment of the board. And we look forward to seeing you next week, okay? Thank you, everybody, for your participation. George, we're all ready to be still there. Thank you very much for your participation and we'll eat to the next agenda item. Yes, and thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Clark. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the water rate amendments vote to remove from warrant. Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. This is just a technical thing. It turns out that even though the water commission withdrew it and we moved on last week, it turns out the selectmen did vote to put it on the warrant. So I would have to vote to remove the water rate amendments article. You don't have to call it Article Three because we changed all the numbers anyway. Just to remove the water rate amendment article from the warrant, if you could just do that so we can keep the record clean.
I can do it. I move that we remove the water rate amendment from the annual town warrant.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert?
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Yeah, Creighton?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. That's unanimous. The next item is capital improvements budget.
I have, we have Sam hiding out there. I just poked him to turn his video on, so I, I think you all, I, I, I think you all have the, the update board was in the packet. Hi, Sam. And I could put up on the screen for the public whenever you're, you want me to, whenever Sam is ready.
I'm not sure what you have in your packet, so I'm going from, are you going to put that up?
Yeah.
Because then we could at least be looking at the same thing.
Wait a second, sorry.
This was all voted on by the advisory committee. It's sort of a revised list. We started out with slightly under $4 million of requests and we ended up voting on a million, just under a million and a half dollars of requests, trying to be very conservative to reserve cash because we don't know what's coming down the road. We left about $2,350,000 worth of requests. I'm going to call it undealt with or deferred at this point. There is one item that should be on here and is not. And it's a $42,000 truck tractor lease payment for DPW that inadvertently got left off. We voted on it last night four to zero to recommend approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this, if you have any.
I could see, if you just saw that, it's also in our package, is it not, or is it's in your package? Nasty capital request. Is there any questions from the board? I have Jack Creighton and then Jack Creighton, wait a second.
Yeah, I think.
Wait a second, Jack. Go ahead, Jack. You, you were muted. Go ahead.
No, I just, I think they've done a very good job. I know the deliberations. They spent a lot of time. I think we ought to just focus.
Okay. I was going to call on Chris and he gave us the thumb. He looks like he's good on it. Any other from the board members? Any questions? Diane Kennedy?
Sorry, just a quick question for Sam, whether there was anything that got deferred, you know, or that you weren't able to fund in this cycle? Or have you, are you working in such a way that you're pretty much on top of the likely requests and are able to fund it?
Well, we think so. Truncated list came back to us from the town, having been discussed with all the various departments, schools, DPW, saying, this is what we absolutely need right now. We can, we can hold off on some of the other things. So looking at the town's wishes, if the budget is passed as it's presented, we'll be left with about $2 million in the stabilization fund coming out of annual town meeting. So we'll be in pretty good shape moving forward to fund additional things, not everything, because we never have enough money.
Well, and that, and that might very likely change, you know, given.
There's so many unknowns right now that it's better to be conservative and if people can live with a short list, fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'll just follow up on Sam. So we did take a hard look. We cut back. We talked to everybody and said, what's, what are, what are pieces of equipment that we need to either order or acquire right now? What are projects we can get done in the next six months? So that if we need to come back in the fall, we can do that. And as Sam said, we still have significant money in the reserve fund so we can come back to other projects as we need. And I just want to remind everybody, as Sam pointed out, there's that one, this list just needs, it needs to be added, that, that $42,000 payment for the heavy haul tractor, so.
Paul Schubert?
So Sam, the, the only thing that comes up there on that list that worries me a little bit is the school bus leasing. Looking at how transportation may need to be done in the fall, they may need to lease further numbers of buses to increase the spacing of the children when they get transported. So that's the only thing there which may need to be adjusted. That could always be done as a special town meeting or in the fall town meeting.
I think that's probably what we'd have to do, Paul. You know, I don't think the schools have modeled that kind of a situation, at least not to my knowledge.
If, if I can jump in on that for just a second. So without getting into great details tonight, we're going to talk more next week. The state has given preliminary numbers on this COVID cares fund for unanticipated COVID-19 expenses. So Paul, if we do have to do other things like that, should have some funds available from that packet for, you know, if we do more buses that were unanticipated, there's, there's actually now money available for that. And we'll talk more next week in detail about that.
Okay, thanks.
And the other thing probably to add to that, Paul, is with $2 million in the stabilization fund, we'll be in a position to be able to take quick action on that.
Good.
Okay, any other commentary on this article? It's on the warrant already. Okay, no other commentary. Is there a motion relative to the article?
I make a motion to approve to town meeting floor. The article for capital improvement budget as stated.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further deliberation? Not seeing any further deliberation. Ask for roll call vote. Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton? Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. That's unanimous, Tracy. Thank you very much, Sam. That's a lot of work.
You're welcome.
A lot of work the committee did on that and we really do appreciate that the dedication, it's a lot, the, the time and dedication it takes for you folks to produce that far as each year. So thank you to you and thank you to your committee.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next article is the community preservation committee. I see Russ Panetta has presented his visage upon the screen. And with that, I will turn the microphone over to Russ to make the presentation of the article relative to community preservation. Welcome, Russ. It's good to see you. Russ is still muted. Here he is. Okay, go ahead. Good to see you.
There we go. How you guys doing tonight?
Good.
Appreciate the opportunity. We have one, two, three, four, five things that we recommended. One was to the library. This is to digitize a collection of papers and stuff that they have as well as restoring an old map that went into the town. We're looking for $3,000. Recommended by an eight zero vote. A request from the water department and recreation open space for trail improvements in the Aaron River area, removing graffiti from some of the rocks, removing some undergrowth for $11,000. That was recommended eight zero as well. The housing trust do us for $200,000 to get more involved in acquiring properties. That was approved in an eight zero vote as well. The town building committee came in and was unanimously eight to zero for $200,000. This is money going towards plans for the hopefully new town meet, or town hall. We had the school. We made a mistake originally. Miss came out as $3,000 and that I have to run back. We ran that through on, did we meet Paul Monday night? Was it? But we revoked it either way and that.
Monday, yep.
That was for. School to complete its MADA. And that was it for new things. We had extended grant, historical society had a grant that had expired and the money was withdrawn about two days before they came in with the final bill for $8,400. So we voted to restore the tennis house. Replacement fund had $200,000 that was going to be retired. We extended that until at least the fall, just in the event they still need that money to pull things off. That and a $100,000 portal housing for the disabled people have been amended until the fall, neither of which affect any. The Cohasset Youth Baseball had $3,888 and 47, or 40 cents still open. We voted to keep that open. They probably will be coming back for more money in the spring. Looking for storage. Slay plans of mice. They're going to pull that off for a lot, but it turned out. So we extended that at $136,786. Sandy Beach Association had $3,479 still in the account and we voted to extend that the night as well. There's one for the Nike buildings. These are ones that are going to get withdrawn. A Nike building, which is a property up at Ricky Hill, owned by the trustees of the reservation. We had approved that. We're going to take it. And they weren't happy about having a provision restriction. And, you know, one goes in the end, but you have to take the brand back. We do have a payment on the property of King Street. Have to make this payment to commence left. And that obviously. Unanimous, well, we're not going to do that. And that is a much hit for us. Does anyone have any questions about any of that?
Yeah, a little insight. Thank you, Russ. Excellent work. And I think what's greatly appreciated is people should know that the preservation committee stepped in to help the town hall keep momentum going without burdening the town with a lot of financial issues. So that grant helps greatly and helps the town hall committee. And this is a good example in times of crises, two committees working together for the benefit of the town. So congratulations to both of you, both committees.
Actually, everything that we voted to approve or to recommend, all are on town owned properties. With the credit house, but that's going to benefit us in the 40 B period. A lot of times we get knocked for not doing things for the town. This is one of those times where we did things for town, but really nobody else.
Well done.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, not hearing any. Do I hear a motion relative to this?
Can, can you put up the, the article number or the description and I'll happily make the motion? Or do you want me to just?
It's Article 16.
Thank you. I, I move that we recommend to town meeting Article 16, the funding under the community preservation committee article.
There's a second. Any further deliberation? One thing I noticed on the vote advisory voters for this is. voters for this, is that correct?
Advisory saw everything except for the ones that were taking or extending. And also, when presented to the advisory board, I misquoted the price on the fencing at 3,000. I'm getting in touch with Helene. I guess I'm going to be there Thursday night, is it, Chris?
Yes.
Just to go in and tell them, yep.
Okay.
Couple bucks.
Okay, answers my question. I don't hear any further deliberation. I'll call for the roll call vote on this. Diane Kennedy.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton. Okay, Jack somehow. Jack Creighton. Jack Creighton.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. That's unanimous, Tracy. Thank you. Russ, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
For all your dedication and the work of your committee. If you'd thanked them for us, it's much appreciated.
Great. It's great committee. I'm sort of prejudiced, but I think it's the best committee in town.
We'll leave it at that. We'll leave it at that.
You're so modest.
You're a good group of people. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Good to see you, Russ.
Night, Russ.
Next item, take your next right item on the agenda is the acquisition of easements at Two Smith's Place for Culver. Chris?
So this is article 21 on the updated warrant. And this is the, well, effective replacement for the citizen's petition that was filed. Council Durencis had drafted, what had been presented to us as a citizen's petition was somewhat flawed. It only released easements that didn't gain the new ones, which is somewhat of a problem. So what's the problem at Smith's Place is that it was discovered during some deliberations on a proposed project. It didn't happen years ago, but James Brook runs in a different location than the actual Eastman. Yes, that's Jack Creighton.
The concom, we're going, what is this? It's not.
Exactly. So we need to fix that. So and the memo was sent out to you earlier from the, from BPW detailing there's a maps and all of that stuff. And I said, since I drafted the, and I can show this, I think you have in your packet, I can show it here. And this, this goes, this details the position of easements and release of the old ones once we get the new ones. So advisory recommended this by a vote of eight to nothing at their last meeting. So.
And we do.
Housekeeping, but it's really a housekeeping article. So.
Yeah. Okay. Deliberation on this, Diane Kennedy.
Just a, just a general comment because, you know, here we are again talking easements. And I know that throughout town, there are a lot of town property underneath private property. Is there, do we have like a catalog of that? And is that something that we should try to stay on top of so that we're not, if things don't get conflated when we're in the middle of a development, for example, you know, process? And we have to clean up some of these legal recordings.
That's an excellent question, Diane. So as a matter of fact, we're using the GIS system, this electronic mapping. One of the things we've been doing is putting the conservation easements the town has on a map and making sure they're all accurate. And that was being done in conjunction with the open space recreation folks. And I think a couple of private, Katie Holden, who had, I know, done some, but on open space and is all the volunteer work. So there are efforts made to being, to layering some of these things that haven't been looked at a while into the GIS so that we can validate them and then know if there's something there or something comes up. So unfortunately, things like this, you know, didn't appear until someone actually took a hard look at it. So I'm afraid this, this, it's one of the challenges when you have a town that's 250 years old plus, that's going to be some historical anomalies. And we are trying to get ahead of them.
Any other commentary? Do I hear a motion relative to this article? Anybody want to take a shot at it?
I move that we recommend to town meeting approval of the article regarding the easements on, is it Smith Place? It's not up in front of me.
It's Two Smith Place.
Smith Place.
It's article 21.
Article 21, Two Smith Place.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further deliberation? Not hearing any. Roll call vote. Diane Kennedy.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert. Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton. Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. That passes unanimously. And with that, we move over to article operating budget.
This is, this is now article four. And there's been a, there was a healthy, so the, the, you have been presented, the board had gotten the entire packet of updated budget information a couple of meetings ago. We shared it with advisory, advisory, a couple, and a couple, a couple of eight minutes ago voted to recommend. And, and then you all heard the school department budget presentation last week. Adviser heard it the next night. And after deliberations, the advisory committee voted to recommend the school budget and voted the overall, you know, water, sewer, town chair and school by a vote of eight to one. One vote. And again, was, was in opposition, was, was looking for, you know, cuts at this point. And the philosophy that, that the advisory board adopted and which this board has adopted is to, you know, we have some reserves, we're going to put them into place, and we're going to buy some time and see what happens. Hopefully, as we get more information, we're going to take more accurate and clear action. So, so the advisory committee has voted to recommend the entire package. You've now heard all the budgets. I have Don. Don is up there. If anyone has any questions, if him or me. So at this point, I'll give you just a quick update that as of yesterday, Don, we are at 93.1% collection on property taxes and 92% on motor vehicles. So we're in really good shape. We're only running five points behind last year at this time. And again, last year at this time, the deadline was May 1. This year it's June 1. So people are still, you know, there are people holding. We'll give you another update after June 1. But so far, you know, I'm not just fingers crossed, you know, all of our efforts being made here. Things are looking okay. And again, with the COVID cares money that we'll talk about more next week, I think we're going to be okay to cover unanticipated expenses as well, at least for, you know, the first, the remainder of this year and well into this first, first half of next year. So. Is there anything else you want to add, Don, or?
No, I agree with you. I think the CAREZAC money will definitely benefit us and help us through the rest of this year and definitely next year.
Diane Kennedy? Wait, Diane, Diane, for some reason.
I got it. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Chris and Don, do you have a sense of, you know, what points at which we might get some information on not only CAREZAC money coming in, but state revenues or state budget changes or, you know, where we might need to make some potential pivots in terms of what next year's going to look like?
Well, I'll let Don talk about the CAREZAC because he was on a big conference call. But that money's available to us right now. We're planning on creating a plan, but I let Don to talk about that more. So.
Yeah. So I was on a call with the state on Thursday, and then also with our auditors the next day with a group of my colleagues, just to kind of talk about the CARES money. But yeah, right now, the plan is, is the application due date for June 5 for our expenses through June 30. Basically, the guidance was draw down all the money that's available to us, which is about 700,000, 750 at this point. Pardon me. Part of the money can be used for essential cash flow purposes. So that is why we're going to plan on drawing all of it down. We clearly don't have $750,000 of expenses related to COVID at this point. Again, we just asked advisory for 100 just to have some, some extra cash for it. So basically, our plan is to application for expenses incurred to date, kind of come up with a plan of what we think we'll spend between now and June. Whatever that difference is, will apply for that amount of money under this other section in the application for cash flow. And that's essential. What the state will require us to do is a bi-monthly reporting of how we spend this funding. And so we draw down to 750. Anything not spent is allowed to be carried over into FY '21. The other thing that the state is talking about is that at the federal level, the feds are also considering the use of this funding for revenue loss, which would be a game changer at the state level, along with the local level. That would plug state budget issues, which would then alleviate any potential loss of state revenue to communities. And then that would also allow us to use some of this money to bring in the revenue of the general fund budget side. So the cuts that we made, we could potentially make up with this fund. Again, that is in the future. We don't know if that's going to happen. But again, when you look at the guidance from the state's advisory and finance, the 750 that we've been allotted so far is only a little more than 50% of what we're potentially eligible for through this CARES month. Essentially, what has happened, the feds provided 2.7 billion to the state. 45% of that is being passed through to cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. At this point, the 750 that you may have seen or heard for the chemical asset is only 25% of that 45%. So again, there's, there's still a lot up in the air. And this is really just funding to get us to avoid any potential issues with incurred expenses that we did not budget. But hopefully down the line, we could potentially use it as a revenue source for next year to help us out.
Okay, Paul Schubert.
So my understanding, these are largely unrestricted grants coming to the town. Is that right? I mean, we don't have to pay it back. And this is, if it's defendable by COVID costs, then it's not, you don't need to pay it back.
So the guidance right now is that any unspent funding would have to be returned to the state. So again, these expenses are for, expenses incurred from March 1 through December 30 of 2020. So we have from now until December 20th, or December 30th, sorry, to essentially spend down this money for COVID-related expenses. And so at the end of that time, if there is any money remaining in this fund, we would have to return that. But if, like I said, legislation allows us to use this for revenue loss, we wouldn't be returning anything because then therefore we could, we could bring that in as revenue in the general fund to help our balance sheet.
Okay. Paul Schubert, Paul Schubert has more.
So a couple of things would be, you know, the, the ability to almost socially distance within the town hall with things like plexiglass walls and things like that. Maybe one very quick way to retrofit the town hall for safety of the employees. And that's something that's infrastructure that could be portable. So, you know, you could take it out if you get a new town hall. And the other thing I would recommend is getting, you know, equipment for the firearm police for personal protection. Order it now for the fall because that's going to, you're going to have a tough time finding it. But once you find it, you can store it. And that could be easily defendable as COVID expense.
Absolutely. I mean, from an accounting standpoint, it's not going to be a nightmare. But at the same time, what they are recommending and what they guide you on is that this is almost the last piece of funding to use. So we did get some money from Massachusetts Health Organization for the Health Department for extra nurses. We've applied for police grants. We'll also be submitting for reimbursement for FEMA. So basically, the COVID, what we're, what we're going to be submitting through them is anything that didn't, but that wasn't covered under those other grants. So the things that you just mentioned would be perfect expenditures to run through this grant for retrofitting town buildings, equipment, PPE and things of that nature.
Any other questions? Okay, not hearing any. Is there a motion relative to the operating budget? Anyone want to make a motion?
It's officially article four, by the way.
We recommend to town meeting article four, the general operating budget.
Second.
Okay, motions made and seconded. Any further deliberation? Not hearing any. Call for roll call vote. Diane? Diane Kennedy? Oh, wait a second.
I got it. Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. That's unanimous, Tracy. Okay. Thank you very much, Don. Ton of work putting these operating budgets together and all the negotiations that you've carefully got to do with schools and other committees. You're, we're very proud and pleased to everything that you're doing and the hard work you have to putting the budget together. You also seem particularly on top of a flexibly as we need for these COVID and crisis-related fundings, the opportunities and the flexibilities we have. So we're really glad that you're on the job, you know, the way you are during this crisis for us. So thank you, Don, and thank you to your entire staff.
Thank you, Kevin. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, the next, any remaining?
We'll put that on as a catchall in case we miss something. So we'll do that again next week. But I think we're all set. There's just two more for next week, and we should be done.
We should be able to, good, be able to issue the warrant at that time, then.
That's the plan.
That's the plan. Okay, good, folks. Next item on the agenda is annual town meeting town election update. Chris, I'll let you, I see we're joined by Carol St. Pierre. Welcome, Carol. Great to see you. Thank you for being here tonight with us. Chris, I'll let you go ahead and lead this discussion.
Do you want to go first, Carol, and talk about the election and let you go? Or I'm going to talk about town meeting first. What are you going to need?
The election would be great. I'm seeking a favor from the Secretary of State to reduce the amount of polling workers. So I could only have, I'd only have one at each table, one on the, one at each check-in table and one at each checkout table. The booths will be placed seven feet apart. The facilities department are building shields for me to place on the table. Elections division is also suggesting that we put a table in front of the table. So when you check in, you're passing the ballot through the plexiglass onto a table, and the voter would pick up the ballot. I will also have a poll worker walking around wiping down the booths. They will, they will be wearing protective gear, a mask and a face shield. I'm also trying to redirect the precincts, the way they, they'll enter the beginning of, the front of town hall. But when they exit precinct one, we'll go through where the offices are. And precinct two will come back down the middle the way they normally do. I'm also sending out a letter to all residents, to all households, urging all voters, if they want to participate in the election, to vote early by mail. On the back of the letter, there's an application, and there's a second, second application if someone doesn't have a printer, and they can mail it to me. I also have pens. Yeah, I'll encourage voters to bring their own pen. I'll also have fresh pens in a bucket that they will drop off as they exit and someone wiping them down.
Okay. Anything else, Carol, before I go to questions?
Any questions, I'll take.
Any questions from the board? I see Diane Kennedy.
Just a general question on whether any other communities have held elections already, local elections, and, and kind of what has been the result of that. I, and I can't imagine you're doing this in a vacuum. I would imagine your colleagues elsewhere are doing.
I don't know of any of, right now.
Carrie Thompson?
So I actually would have been following the local senate special election on the South Shore tonight. And turnout, just in general, in Pembroke dropped by 77% today as opposed to the pre-COVID primary. It dropped by 48% in Bourne, 42% in Falmouth, 66% in Kingston. So people are really afraid, I think, of going to the polls. And Carol, I really appreciate you taking the time to try to ensure this safety and make sure people feel safe and trying to sanitize and do everything as possible. But I am still really worried about people feeling safe to go, even though we have a few weeks, you know, before our election. I'm worried about, you know, how we can make this easier with people. And I would like to have a broader discussion on how we can make our early ballot requests easier if that's the time you all want to have this. Is, so, yeah, yeah. So I think that right now, the system places an undue burden on both Carol, our town clerks, and on voters. And I know that other towns and other town clerks have been okay, accepting some. And I know that other towns and other town clerks have been okay, accepting some digital signatures online for voters to apply for their ballot. And I, in a dream world, I would like to be able to have this on our town website where a voter can just fill it all out electronically, sign, request their ballot that way and just have it mailed to them. And I feel like this saves money, it saves time, it saves the ability, you know, of having to touch more mail, of having to just have that whole extra added step of going through mailing. And I know that our lawyer, Paul Durensis, has some thoughts on this. This is something that our legislature is currently debating, by the way. But I do think heading into bigger elections in September and November, I think that we as a town can take, you know, an active stance on this and really make it easier for voters to request their ballots and not have to go through that extra added step.
Thank you, Carrie. Paul Durensis had his hand up. We also have a question from the audience on this that I'll be reading. Paul Durensis?
I'll defer to the audience. I was gonna comment on on the experience with the elections, but Carrie's already covered that.
So you don't, okay, so I'll go to the audience question. And this is from Meg Wheeler, one fourteen Forest Avenue. For those of us who don't have printers, how can we apply for the ballots? I guess.
Two applica-, two applications will be sent to every household for the beginning of next week.
So they can, they'll get it in the house and they can fill out the application, put a stamp on it, send it in and get their ballot back?
Or drop it in the silver drop box at Town Hall.
And that'll be part of the, okay, fine.
Pick it up with their phone and email it to me.
That was my question. What other types of documents will you accept? Can they fill it out and take a picture and email? And will you accept emails of a scan?
Yes, as long as the handwritten signature is visible.
Okay, so you're just saying flat out, Carol, that you just are not comfortable accepting digital signatures all the, because the law isn't clear on this for the secretary.
At this time, correct.
Okay.
I I listened to the, a four hour um election hearing on Thursday.
I, yeah, I listened to that, too.
There's a lot of proposed changes. The clerks of our, you know, are excited about some of the changes that would happen. And until that goes forward, I have to follow the law. The election law.
Okay, anything else on that? Carrie, you gotta look on your, you want asking?
No, I just, I don't think the law is currently clear on this. I respect Carol trying to maintain the integrity of these elections and that's obviously what we're all trying to do here. So we can maybe chat more with our lawyer and figure it out. But I do think we need to just make it clear to people that they can also print off this page online, fill it out and then email you a picture without having to go through the mail system. I don't think it's clear to voters right now that they can sidestep the mail process or bringing something to your box in person. I just think we need to do a better job as a town, showing people that it can be easier and safer to do early ballot requests.
And I'm just following what's printed on the Secretary of State's website.
Okay. Diane Kennedy, you were wanting to get on?
No, I I just, you know, only because this is, you know, not the time to have a fulsome discussion, but this is very fascinating to me. And I think especially as we head into fall, um, you know, it would be great if we could have a general conversation based on where the Secretary of State's guidance is and whether there are options. So let's, let's cue this up for another time.
Thank you, Diane. I agree.
I also.
Yeah, Chris.
Because I think we're all optimistic that state will take some action and allow us to do more things. And also, just to be clear, we have some funding, you know, this is, this is also COVID cares funding, right? We can actually pay for additional things if we need to, uh, to help get, push this out to voters. And we will be reminding everyone that they can vote by mail early, uh, everywhere we can. I think that's, we have, we have five weeks, six weeks before the election. So uh, everything we can do to help communicate to the voters, we will carry it. Let's figure out a good uh media campaign to do that as well.
Okay, Jack Creighton has a comment?
Yeah, I think voting is fundamental to our democracy. Um, I think we need to have secure voting and I think Carol's done an excellent job protecting the integrity of our voting over the years. And I think as we move forward, we need to figure out a way to make it easier, especially with the virus. And lots of work needs to be done and I'm a hundred percent for improving. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commentary?
Um, I believe if legislative. I believe that um if legislature passes to allow digital signatures and digital um applications that um the Secretary of State will provide a portal. If not, I talked to Ron Menard and he says the town is capable of building that on the town's website.
Good.
There are some towns that already have that built into their website, too. So there are a lot of examples that we can be using.
Okay, anything else on this subject? Okay, if there isn't, Chris will go to uh the annual town meeting. Carol, thank you very much.
So, well, we'll, we'll keep Carol on the side here because she's an integral of this next piece, too. So unless she wants to head out, so uh, so we've been having a lot of conversations. And I think this board, the the board here was crystal clear that we we want to make things as safe as possible, safety first. So so taking that, taking that and having conversations, uh, we're, we're now deep into planning a drive-in movie theater style town meeting at the Music Circus. So we were collaborating with uh with Vince Longo and his team at the Music Circus. We've been collaborating with Dan Evans, the moderator, and Carol and Paul. And and we had our, you know, our pre-meeting meeting with uh, including Kevin. And and we, I spoke with Lee and Lee, the chairman of advisory after the meeting. So we're, we're making good progress. There's gonna be a site meeting later this week with Dan and and several other folks to take a look at the logistics of how to get cars in and how we would manage that. And I think we're excited that this can come together. It will allow people to come together and still be safe. People will be in their own cars, they can get themselves there. Uh, and we're, we're working out logistics for, you know, getting the folks who need to speak up in front, uh, setting up some kind of a attendant facility. And then um, uh, making sure there could be, you know, safe microphones placed in the, in the, in the, in the parking field. And exploring ways to to make sure this gets livestreamed at the same time. So the meeting could be livestreamed on Zoom and we can present on Zoom and on one four three and hopefully Facebook as well. Uh, and then um, seeing if we can't enhance the Wi-Fi. Ron was up there today literally with a device testing what the signal strength was like. So if people want to, you know, have their tablets, they can, you know, stream some of the presentation. The the theory here, the company that will do this, um, will broadcast all the audio on an FM radio. That's a low, it's a low, you know, it's a short area. So you could be able to, just people in their cars are just tuning their FM radios and listen on in. And um, so I, I, and we'll have screens up in front that'll be big enough. And they're out there, I think the way Ron described this, the LEDs, so they're not light sensitive. So um, so these, this is, this is exciting. We're, I'll, I'll have more updates for you weekly as we go. So we're very optimistic and and next week, um, providing we can get this all to come together, which I'm confident we will, uh, we'll ask you to reset the location of the town meeting on the warrant, as you said, it next week, to one thirty Sawyer Street, South Shore Music Circus. The other thing that was under consideration, I'm just gonna socialize with you, was changing the meeting time. So Dan um and and the group discussed maybe moving it back an hour to six as opposed to seven, figuring that, you know, most people even in several weeks will probably not be commuting back and forth to Boston. And if they are, that should still be early enough, late enough for people to be able to get to the meeting. It's light, it's still day, it'll allow, you know, um, not that mosquito should be a monstrous problem at that point and people will be in their own cars. But uh, it'll also allow us to give, if there's a little weather problem, we have to delay things for a short amount of time. So, so that's something else to, just to socialize with all of you, if you want to discuss that tonight or next week, by possibly moving that time up by one hour. The goal, of course, is to to do a lot of education between the close of the warrant next week and the, and the actual meeting date. You know, through our TV show, we're gonna look at doing a Facebook Live presentation as well. And I, and we're, you know, we've historically been doing these things and we want to just increase that. So people will get as much information as possible before the actual meeting date. And as the warrant will be mailed to everybody's home, so everybody will have that. So there's, there's still just to work out. I mean, Carol um has, it's, obviously she has to register everyone, her team has to register everyone as they come in. We have to validate their voters, we're talking about how people would vote. Dan is still in favor of many people hold paper outside their car if that's necessary. As we were talking about people flashing lights, but a lot of these new cars, you can't control them. They turn on and off by themselves sometimes. So we don't have people accidentally voting by mistake because the car chose to turn the lights off. So, but the goal is to have as much of this, hopefully as many of the articles will be by consensus as possible anyway. With it, with all the vetting and all the tremendous work that 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 uh all the town committees have done to make this uh meeting come together. So does anyone have any questions for me about this uh, this experiment?
Just kudos. This is so exciting. And I, you know, thinking out of the box under these circumstances is difficult, so I'm really excited.
So I have to give credit to, so Bill quickly floated this a a a couple of weeks ago. And and I had heard some other towns talking about it and I just, I kind of shrugged shoulders, but it really, it's really caught on. And I gotta say, staff, Ron Menard is, is his own this because there's so much technology involved in making this happen. So he's doing a great job and his staff and facilities have jumped in and uh, you know, we had a, uh, I, I think Dan, by the way, since Dan is working from home from town right now, he's gonna be site visiting tomorrow. And he's working to make this, uh, the, you know, this degree, I mean, look, it's, it's most certainly serious, town meeting, serious business. It's also, you know, if we get a little fun, I mean, I don't think we can have a popcorn concession, that'd be kind of fun if we could have candy or popcorn. But I don't think that's gonna work in a, in a meeting like this. So um, that said, you know, I, I think it, it could be a fun and very productive evening. So.
Okay, so I, from the audience, uh, since they stayed up this late listening to us, I'll read it as more of an answer uh, from um Meg Wheeler, again, that was on Forest Avenue. Thank you for considering a drive-in theater town meeting. This will be the first one that both my husband and I can attend as we won't need to worry about childcare.
So you just gotta make sure the kids don't vote for you, just don't, don't give them the voting cards, so. Yeah, but it is, you know, you, you know, you could put the kids in the back, they could be watching a movie and you can be voting in the front seat. So uh, let's make it a family affair. So I, I, I mean, it is, I think it's gonna be interesting. So typically, we have three hundred or so people at a town meeting, give or take. In theory, we're, we're looking to see how many people, you know, how many cars we could fit comfortably with, you know, probably distancing every other row. And we'll, we'll, I think it's exciting. So again, we'll be giving updates every week as we go forward.
Okay, anything else uh on this, the town meeting or election process from anybody? Not hearing any. Carol, thank you very much for joining us. You're welcome to stay for the remaining of the meeting, uh, whatever you wish. And uh, thank you for all the work you do for the town.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Okay, next item on the agenda is uh Board Committee Process Discussion. Now, I'm gonna put this, each year, each year, the boards and committees there are due for new membership. New memberships are needed as well as the uh, uh, resigning up uh of uh previous members. And it's a fairly thorough process. And uh, I'll turn this over to Chris to give us a review of how we'll be approaching this uh, this year as we do every year.
Several, several years ago, uh, we were able to to pivot to an online application process. So it actually is a fillable form and you can, so, so we've been doing that now for several years. And we're gonna continue to do that. So we're gonna um be re-advertising this to let people know what committee seats are available. At the same time, I was talking with Tracy earlier, we can, we're gonna have a, have a list for all of you. We'll distribute electronically next week of what committee seats are available. And also, if there's anyone who's already on a committee, we're gonna send them individual emails asking if they're interested in serving again uh, and and then sending a link to the electronic form, because we even want people who are reapplying to to fill out an application if they could. And um, you know, the, the thing is that typically, we're doing this in May and June, but typically, there's also a new board of selection. The elections have already happened and things have moved on. So it's likely that this will, just because of timing, this will probably drag into July. And not, not purposely so much, but just because of the delays we're having. So people will be carryovers to some extent. I mean, if there's some appointments that need to be made in June and July, we can, I mean, I mean, in June. Uh, it's, it's likely, though, I think some of the, the more, some of these might end up, you know, going into early July. We'll, we'll see how the, the, you know, the schedule is. And uh, because that's typically how it works. So with, you know, the, the board, the elections have already happened by this point. So that's one other, one other thing to work on. So we are, we have, we'll have, we have that list for everybody next week and we'll start posting this on Facebook and putting things in the Mariner and remind people that there's slots available, please apply.
Thank you, Chris. Any commentary, questions? Diane Kennedy?
Only because this is probably my, my first passion is, is sort of the committee structure. But Chris, I'm wondering if, if there's any way we can, and we've done it in the past, had a press release or something that, that we could actually share with every single person sitting on a committee. Because, you know, it's, it's one thing if you know you're up, but you might not know your colleagues up and you might have a friend or a call, you know. I, I think we, we owe it to everybody serving in town government to be sort of insiders on where, you know, where there are openings, um, what the needs are. And, you know, I would.
Wait, Diane, for some reason.
Sorry, just, just, you know, if we can get it out to everybody far and wide about, you know.
Diane? You're all set? Okay, Jack Creighton?
Yeah, I, first of all, I think the people who've served on committees, uh, thank you. You've done excellent work and you are the best people to reach out. You know how important your committee is. You probably know somebody who kind of was interested in the conversation and sometimes you just have to ask. And if you ask and they're interested, well, give them to me and I'll talk to them. Or give it to Diane or member of the board of selection. But anyway, this is our town, let's all get together and help it run better.
Great, good. Okay, anything else on this process? Okay, not seeing it. We'll move to the next item agenda, which is Town Manager Update and under that, upcoming meeting dates and agenda items.
Okay. One second, I've got a couple of things I wanted to, okay. So um, the meeting next week will wrap up town meeting and um, we'll also have a couple of other items. One is we'll talk a little bit about, you know, make sure that you all have a list of committee slots that are available and push that big email to everybody. I'm gonna ask, one of the things we were trying to do is get the Hazard Mitigation Plan presentation and the uh, the meeting uh, on the Housing Production Plan, but we, we weren't able to get the players together. So I've got to ask all of you if you're willing to consider joining a Planning Board meeting on June third. Join, to to have a joint meeting with the Planning Board for those two topics, uh, to, to review and approve the Housing Production Plan and then just to hear a presentation on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And that's, that's part of the requirement for that. The Hazard Mitigation Plan allows us to get MEMA and FEMA money. And the, uh, I, I think you've all talked about the Hazard Production Plan. So if, I'm just gonna ask all of you to think about June third. Uh, and by the way, if any of you have any objection to it right now, let me know.
What would be the alternative to us meeting in that format?
Uh, we'd, we'd ask them to join one of your meetings. So if it's, if it can't be June third, we'd ask them to join you all on maybe June ninth or June twenty-third. Those are the next two meetings of this board.
So what does the board want to, to get a feeling you want to do? Do you want to try to go to join them or ask if they want to join one of our two meetings? This needs to be a joint meeting, right?
Uh, for Housing Production Plan, it does, yes.
Jack Creighton? Yeah, wait, Jane?
Yeah, it just occurred to me, with Zoom, we could probably combine them. So each committee doesn't have to go to two separate meetings. Can that not be done? We could split the meeting after your joint uh business and we would continue on board of selection and they would continue. I mean, is that feasible, Chris? I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it is. They, except they have, their, their June third meeting is set now. They, they've got to have that, it's, it's already counted. The, the next electments meeting after next Tuesday is, is June ninth. So the, unless the board wants to move that, your meeting up to a, so they, Planning Board only meets on Wednesdays, that's the only difference. They meet on a Wednesday night and not on Tuesday, so, yeah, you could do, there's no reason you couldn't do that.
If they started at, say, six and six to seven, we have the joint meeting and then we continued on. That seems to me a lot more efficient use of our time. But I'll defer to what other members of the board feel about that.
Yeah, we'd be doing that, Jack is suggesting, at the ninth of the twenty-third?
Well, I guess what Chris is saying is the Planning Board can't, can only do it.
No, no, they, I, I could ask, if you can't do the third, I can ask them to join you in the alternative. And we'd do something just like that, Jack, we'd do it early, maybe just start at six if that's possible and do these pieces first, let.
Yeah, so we, so, and people who are following along at, at home will have two meetings to watch until eleven o'clock rather than just one.
Yeah. Okay, so where do, where do we want to leave this then? You want to, want to do, did you, Chris, did you need a decision tonight on this or do you want us to?
No, if, if you all just want to check back and let me know, or let Tracy know, actually.
Feel out, if we're going to decide this next week, why don't you feel them out in terms of, do they want to join us on the 9th or the 23rd? If it's like no problem and we could start them at 6:00 and take care of this, it might work out better for us. On the other hand, I assume we want to be accommodative. So why don't you find out if they're willing to do that at 6:00 on those two dates? And if not, you know, we'll, we'll may well be, want to be accommodative on the 3rd.
Okay, so I'll have Tracy circle back with Lauren and we'll see what we can do. So either the 3rd with them or the 9th.
If we did it on the 3rd with them, then let's do it like at 6:00 where we could do the business between our business with them and then we could leave, you know? So either way, feel out those other cases and then we can decide, you know, next week, okay?
No problem. Just two other quick things. I'm sorry, did someone have a question?
It's Tracy.
Oh.
Yes, Tracy.
Sorry. I just wanted to say, I, when I talked to Lauren, they had the two consultants are available on the 3rd. That's why they were, they had scheduled them and they were hoping that the board of selectmen could join them. So just to save you a step, I don't know, I could still ask, but that was her question.
Well, in that case, I'm available on the 3rd and I don't have any problem doing it on the 3rd if other people are okay with it as well.
I'm, I'm okay on the 3rd. It's 6:00 though, so we could do that and be out of there and then they can do the rest of their business. Diane?
I'm also available on the 3rd, but I'm not available until 6:30. Just to throw a little.
That's okay. I mean, how about if we go back to them that we would do this at 6:30 on the 3rd? We want to be first on the agenda so we can, you know, be done because we'll have schedules. Is that okay, Chris and everybody?
We'll circle back. So thank you for.
Finalize it next week, but that's the way we can, we can do it. Thank you, Tracy.
And two, just two other quick items. So we talked about the beach tonight a little bit and the opening for this weekend. We've been in, in, in good conversations with the Sandy Beach trustees and they, they are asking for our help in managing the parking lot this summer. Typically, you know, they have a kid, one of their staff rotates and because of the restrictions we may have to put into place in the parking lot and the controls on the beach, they've really asked us to consider. So I just, so I'm, pull something together over the rest of this week and hopefully present a plan. The plan is to present a plan to all of you next week about how we might partner with the beach. So that's something just on the radar and.
No.
Okay.
Okay. And do you have any?
And just quickly, that same thing with the regional sewer plan. I did talk to the sewer commission. They are available to meet with you, at least one, at least the chairman is next Tuesday. If that works as well, just to get an update because I, I think it's something that, that we need to circle back on. And I see. On Lining your head and Diane, so.
Yes, I'm getting calls from other town selectmen.
So, and I, it's time to get you, you all needed a, unfortunately, the last couple of months have been hard and we just need to get people back in the loop on this, this question.
Anything else? You had, well, there's another one too. We need to do your annual update type thing or?
Oh yeah, so.
What we need to do is when, we decided as a group that we would do Chris's annual review this year. The contract calls for July 12, July, but it makes a lot more sense all around. We decided to do this at the June 23rd meeting. So what we need to do is have two of us work as a subcommittee to go ahead and, you know, just do the logistics and work with the human resources, Miriam, to, you know, to put out the instructions and the forms of what we do. It's clerical and so forth, but we need to have two people assigned to that. Jack, you want to say something?
Yeah, I think we decided we would move that up. I think it's a good idea. I don't know. It seems pretty simple. I mean, Diane's an active candidate. It's kind of difficult to expect her to, to handle evaluating Chris while she's running for office. Paul, I think is an obvious person, although he's looking awful tired with all the work in the hospital.
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to punt on this one.
Oh, come on.
You know.
I think Carrie would be good. I think somebody who's, who's new. You know, but I think, I don't know, Kevin, but is that, you're going off? You have no vested, but you have no vested interest.
Well, the thing, we definitely need to have one of the newer people, Paul and I and Chris and. We need to have new people learn how to do that. It's sort of an administrative skill. So one of the people needs to be Jack or Carrie. Diane, you're trying to get in there?
No, I, you know, I, my candidacy aside, you know, I, while I'm busy, I've, Miriam has already reached out to me just in terms of kind of setting up, only because I've been the, the point person over the last couple of years. The, the forum, so I'm happy to start working with somebody else. And then, you know, it's literally just making sure the forums all set, put it, turning it, you know, giving it to all the selectmen and then walking through the process. There's not much unique things that need to get done other than just reviewing the document that has, you know, we use year to year to year. So if somebody wants to help me, I would, I'd love to just kind of queue it back up and, and step aside. But we all do the same amount of work ultimately. We all have to do the individual review with Chris. We all do, you know, pull, send in the consolidation after the, after the public meeting. So there's really no work other than just getting the document ready and out to the.
Maybe you tee it up and, and let Carrie do it. I just can't. I have got a lot of things I've got going on.
That's fine. I'm, I'm happy to be part of this here. So that's, all right, I'll loop you in.
Well, have Carrie so that she learns the whole skill. I think one, that's what we're really looking at. So.
I love.
That'll be Carrie and Diane will do that and you'll report to us on June 9th with the entire process. Because it'll be between June 9th and the 23rd that we fill out our forms and, and then we'll discuss at that meeting, you know, what we do on the 23rd. But that gives a new person who will learn the skill going forward. Okay? All right, folks?
And, and just, just to follow up on, on, on the scheduling, if you're upset with that piece. And by the way, the plan meets sometime in those two weeks. You all do face to face with it. Obviously it's hard to do it face to face right now. So you do a review and then we review it each individually and then it gets consolidated.
Well, that's, well, yeah, and we'll disguise, that needs to be described in detail on the 9th. But yes, that's what happens is that'll probably need to be done by Zoom, probably.
Yeah, probably, we'll probably do it by Zoom or phone, whatever.
Well, let's lay that all out on the 9th, but we want to do get it done by the 23rd though.
And the goal is to have on June 9th, an update on the selectman's goals and objectives with obviously an update based on what's happening.
That's why we picked that as that, that day, we're going to do the selectman's goals and updates. So that's what's used essentially as a basis for the evaluation of Chris. And both the written one and the other one, as you'll see. So it fits in and we'll start off that agenda with a presentation of the goals and objectives. And then Diane and Carrie will lay out the process for the evaluation, which should be completed on the 23rd. All right.
Great. That's, I have nothing else unless somebody has a question.
Selectmen comments, Diane? Diane, do you have any selectmen comments?
I do not. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the town. Clearly, as we start to open up, I would just ask everyone, what they've done already has cut down the number of cases of the COVID-19 dramatically. If you look at all the other towns around, we're doing a great job at self-distancing, wearing a mask, limiting the outbreak. If we can keep doing this as we open up and as we start to have more people out and about on the beaches, on the fields. If we can keep that, we can protect a lot of lives and control this from spreading. I think it's going to be the new normal, having masks outside and it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a long haul. But I want to thank them in particular. We've done a great job in this town. If we can keep it up, even better. That's all.
Thank you, Paul. Carrie?
I want to give a shout out to school committee member Craig McClellan for helping spearhead the mural banners of our wonderful graduating senior class out on the common and they look amazing. If you haven't seen them yet, it's really nice to see all the smiling faces of our seniors. And I think this is a great idea and maybe something will continue even past COVID life. So that's, I think it's a great thing for the town and it's nice to see.
Thank you, Carrie. Amen to that too. Jack Creighton?
Well, as always, the unsung heroes are the citizens of Cohasset. It's been tough. You've done wonderful. On a more parochial or manner, we might be able to take advantage of the closing of the school and the music circus. Sawyer Street's got bad gas leaks. Very difficult to work on it because of the schools and then during the summer. I think that we should probably see if we can work around town meeting. If we can find a little bit of a spot to get those gas leaks because they're very serious and they're not going away.
I, I want to reinforce that and thank, I think, Chris, I passed the email or two that I got to you. I think it was from people who live on Sawyer Street. I know, I live on Fear Oaks and I smell that driving up and down. So if, because everything is closed, this, and apparently National Grid has told somebody that, you know, they've been willing to do this. It's the town that has more or less said, you can't, you know, do it at any given points because they're so near the schools and so forth. But that is a constant smell. I do wonder sometimes if something is going to blow up driving down Sawyer Street. Because you smell that, that, you smell that gas frequently. So I want to put my reinforcement in that, you know, if we, if National Grid is willing to, and they say they are. And he is, is get them in and fix those pipes on Sawyer Street because there's obvious gas smelling going on there. So I see Chief Sylvia has joined us from the Ethernet, so maybe he has a comment to make on this. Chief?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In fact, I reached out to our representative from National Grid again today. Like everything else, it's a scheduling issue. They had other things that they were doing in town because of the fact that the roads were pretty quiet, including South Main Street, Beach Street and so forth. So we're waiting to hear back from them and hopefully we'll have something for you by next Tuesday on something that might be going on in that area and see if we can't get something scheduled. Because it is on their radar screen. They're fully aware of it. Part of it is trying to get past the tracks and things like that that they have to do. So it is something that's being discussed and Ryan Joyce, me, the guys from National Grid, we're all talking about it. We'll see if we can't get that figured out for you.
That would be wonderful. I think.
Excellent.
The board of selectmen to do that because we all drive up and that's an obvious one. So if you could give us some good news on that, if not, just keep on it like, we know you can keep on something and get it done as soon as possible. Thank you, Chief.
You just, you just gave me some more ammunition, so I'm good to go. Thank you.
And you've, you've got, you've got it from us. Okay. So anything else? That's it in commentary. We'll now go to, done with selectmen comments, minutes of meetings. Do I have a motion relative to the 4/28/2020 minutes that are in our package?
Motion to approve the minutes from 4/28/2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All roll call, Diane?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul, sure would aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin, aye. That's unanimous. Tracy, a motion relative to the 5/5/2020 minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from 5/5/2020.
Second.
And discussion, roll call, Diane?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul?
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie?
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. So ends that there are no topics not unreasonably anticipated within the last 48 hours. I'll call for motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye. And with that stated, I hereby.
All right. The man with the gavel.
I take care. God bless everybody. Take care. Bye bye.
Very good.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Well done.